Captain.
Please stand. March 28, 2017, May 17. The Guff County Board of County Commissioners is now in this session.
Good morning to all. Would you join me in prayer, please? Father, thank you for this wonderful day that you've given us to enjoy. Lord, we ask that you be here in this room this morning with us as this board conducts the business of people of Guff County. Always we ask and look over our law enforcement, that our first responders are military. What be with this community? Yes, we lost a fine pioneer weekend after his visitation in funeral services. All right, and that's Captain Dave Maddox. Pioneer family that helped found and settle this county here, which was back, was Calhoun County back in the day. Be with that family. And all but again, be with us and be with the people. Bless this county of Guff, the state of Florida, and the United States of America. Ask this all in your precious name. Uh, Commissioner Rogers, would you do the honors of the pledge?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, everything and justice for all.
Thank you. It's warm in here.
Yes, sir.
Down there. Oh. Good morning. Thank you for taking time to come out and be at the March 28 regular meeting of the Guff County Board of County Commissioners. As always, in the, at the end of the meeting, we have a opportunity for anyone in the audience, uh, if you're not on the agenda, to come before the board. We ask if you would, please, there's a, uh, some form, a form right behind Mr. Paul here. If you would, fill that out, but if you want to come before the board, we already have some. In other way, it's a record for the clerk's office because, uh, Ms. Roberts over here is the official minute keeper through the clerk of the minutes. And in other way, we can know, we'll have your name and a small, uh, what you want to discuss. So we have to go back, you know, for public records request anything, but that would be good. Again, thank you on behalf of the board for coming out this morning. And, uh, we're going to, we have, let me just run through. We've got fourteen. We have some variances we have to deal with this morning. We have about seventeen items, but I think we can brush through this fairly quickly. Uh, I'm going to shuffle a couple around to start with. Uh, we're going to, at this time, we're going to address the consent agenda. Does, uh, anyone in the audience, uh, have any concerns with the consent agenda? Now, this is, uh, where we do one vote to cover several items. But does anyone have any questions or any concerns with the consent agenda in the audience? Having none, let's move over to our staff. Anyone over here, you have anything? Mr. Lowry, Ms. Sumner, anything over here, Lee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, we received a late notification, um, in the consent agenda on a signature page. The signature page was changed on, uh, for page sixty-four in the consent agenda.
Page sixty-four.
I need to pull that, and, um, the clerk has the two pages that will replace that. It was simply a wording change in the signature form for that document.
All right, well, if you want to, let's handle that if it's, if that's all it is. Do you want, let's do it right now? Or you want to wait I get around to you?
Yes, sir. If it's okay with, with the chairman, we could just swap those pages.
Let's just flip flops, okay?
Yes, sir.
That's great. Any, any, with the board members, any concerns on this?
All right.
That's great then. All right, we'll do that. That's page sixty?
Sixty-four.
All right, page, uh, let me get down here, page, where I can have this for later reference. Page sixty-four. All right. All right, if this, if we're satisfied with that, I have a, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Quinn?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Whitfield.
With the changes.
With the change, okay. All right. Any further board discussion? If not, if there's no opposition, the motion to accept the consent agenda with the change passes five and oh. Thank you. All right. At this time with the, uh, and by the way, people, when you start talking about something, please hold up what you got, because you look here at all, I don't know everything you got, but anyway, uh, in the sake of time, I'm going to ask, uh, before we go into the county staff, uh, with the, uh, library, Ms. Brockman, Nancy, would you please come up? Oh, you're pressed for time.
Thank you.
And, uh, good morning to you. It's good to see you.
And thank you for this opportunity to come in front of the commissioners. Wanted to just celebrate National Library Week once a year. The American Library Association and libraries across the country celebrate Library Week, and wanted to assure you, we'll be doing that as part of the system. One event we'll be doing is a food drive here in the county and taking foods collected. You can trade in food for your library fines. But wanted to assure you, we are addressing the needs and interests of our community. We just finished a nice, uh, program that especially entertained our winter visitors and are getting geared up for our summer program. Uh, I do have a current event newsletter, uh, that I'd like to share with each of the commissioners, and, uh, then would ask that you adopt the proclamation for National Library Week.
All right.
Would you like me to read that?
Would you? I can, or you, you read it.
Okay.
I have a copy of it right here.
All right. National Library Week 2017 Proclamation. Whereas libraries and librarians enable success for all citizens by providing innovative and inspiring programs, job-seeking resources, access to technology, and highly skilled staff to research and answer life's questions. Whereas librarians are organizers and information experts who for centuries have guided people to accurate and reliable information resources. Whereas librarians continue to fulfill their role in leveling the playing field for all who seek information by providing access to new and emerging technologies and providing assistance to those who need or want to learn the skills needed to thrive in our digital world. Whereas libraries continue to transform and expand their services in ways that meet the needs of the communities they serve. Whereas libraries support democracy through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Guff County Board of County Commissioners proclaim April ninth through fifteenth, 2017, National Library Work Week. We encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what's new at your library and to engage with your librarian.
Thank you, Nancy. Gentlemen?
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Macron, second by Commissioner Rogers. Anyone in the audience, any comments or anything? Any other board members? Any opposition to this proclamation? If not, that's five and oh unanimous. Thank you, and thank you for the job that you do in this county with our libraries. We do, and come see us anytime.
All right, sounds good.
We love to see you. Thank you, dear.
Thank you, Ms. Ness.
People, anytime someone offers to bring you a little money, you always, you know, let them choose where they want to sit at the table. But at this time, we're going to have Mr. Ralph Mills here with Waste Pro. He's come this morning to make a presentation to the board. Ralph, it's good to see you, and thank you for taking from your busy schedule to drop by this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, my name is Ralph Mills. I'm the Regional Vice President for Waste Pro. Here today to try to close some open-ended business that we have with the county right now. Couple of things we've got. Uh, I've got a couple of checks with me here today. Uh, the first one is for thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, and that's the one for the fees associated with us being able to use your facility while we were, uh, building our facility. So we've got one check here for that. Second check we've got is seventeen thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, and that's for the transfer station fees that, that we, that the county gets from us for the use of the transfer station for out-of-county garbage. Um, what we get is, uh, we give you two fifty per ton of any out-of-county garbage that, that comes into this, uh, comes into the, uh, system there. So, um, these two checks?
All right, sir. If you would, just, uh, this young lady over here, Ms. Rhonda Wood, would present them to her. She's the financial officer for the county.
Um, uh, we'd kind of talked about it. If we want to, we can move the quarter, the fees from like annually to quarterly, and so, I mean, that, that, I mean, it just clears it up, you know, instead of waiting a whole year on that. If you'd like to do that, we'll make sure we get those fees to you on a quarterly basis now.
All right.
So we started, we started in mid-February with the transfer station, and we've been accruing these fees all that time, so, but we'll be happy to do that if, if the commission would like for us to start paying those quarterly.
Any commissioners, anything? Angler, Mr. Butler, the attorney? What would be more convenient for you?
Well, I mean, I just, I'd, I'd rather just go ahead and, and clear it off the books, you know, so, you know, we can do that, so.
Quarterly?
Yeah, the first quarter, you know, ends in March here, and, you know, sometime in April, we'll, we'll get a, a check to you for the first quarter fees if that's okay.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, is any, you have any, uh?
Mr. Chairman, no, the contract just speaks to them paying that per ton, so however the county wants to schedule it, there's no, there's nothing in conflict with the contract.
All right. Anybody in the board, anything you want to, give us a motion. We'll go with the quarterly or whatever. Mr. Whitfield?
I move that we take this on a quarterly basis.
So move. I hear a second?
A second, a motion.
Second, that's good. All right, any board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Having none, any further, any opposition? Not? Motion filed by Mr. Mills? We will, uh, do it on a quarterly basis, set up with, uh, well, you work through Mr. Butler, and he'll work through Ms. Woodward over here, and, uh...
Got to work. Uh, the last piece of open business we have is the transfer station road.
Sure.
Uh, as you know, um, as, when, when we started there building the transfer station, the county was in the process of closing out your landfill, and we both agreed it would probably be better to wait on that road until we got all, you know, the dump trucks and all the trucks running through there, uh, bringing dirt to close the landfill. So, um, we've got, uh, three bids. I got the last bid yesterday.
Oh, you did?
Um, they range anywhere from two hundred and seventy-seven thousand down to two hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So, a pretty good chunk of change there. Um, need a couple of days to have, you know, my engineering guys look at it and kind of determine. I'm quite sure we're going to go with a low bid, but, uh, it's still up to the, the specs that, uh, Preble Rish put together, uh, at the time and everything, so we're good there. Uh, so I'll come back to you hopefully at either the next board meeting or before the next board meeting and let you know, give you a timetable for when we're going to get started and when we're going to finish the road, but, uh, it'll be a really nice, you know, road going into the transfer station.
That's wonderful. Just a moment here. Mr. Cawthorn, uh, with our landfill, are you through with the heavy dump trucks on the road?
Yes, sir, we're through with the heavy.
So Waste Pro can proceed with the paving of this. Well, I want to, uh, Ralph, I want to personally thank you for working with the county, because if you'd have went in there and paved it, those trucks would have destroyed it, and that would have been just money thrown away. So I came under a little criticism about not meeting a timeline, but sometimes you got to, you got to give some to get, and, and now then we'll have a good road that lasts this long time. It won't be destroyed. So, Mr. Cawthorn, if you, you cleared out, Ralph, uh?
Yeah.
We're looking forward, then, uh...
We'll get going, and I'll report back to you guys very soon on, you know, who we chose.
Sure.
And give you a timetable and everything.
All right. Thank you so much.
Last, I just want to say thank you guys very much for allowing us to service the county. We, we really appreciate it, and, and we hope it's a long-lived relationship, and we'll do whatever we need to do, so.
Good deal.
Okay?
Thank you, and have a safe trip.
Thank you.
All right. Now, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, let Mr. Mills, I think he's leaving, uh... Mr. Butler? Guess who's up?
You.
Let's start over here in our county staff business.
Nothing at this time.
Say that again, slow. Nothing at this time. I'll bet you we can find something, Ralph, on the next, uh, chair. Mr. Attorney?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, everything I have is on the agenda later on, so I have nothing at this time.
All right. Mr. Hammond?
I'm going to screw it up.
I figured.
I'm going to give you just a real quick.
Sure.
Uh, update on, on Triumph and, uh...
Pull your mic around just a little bit, please.
And the BP, and the BP money, as it is done. Mr. Jaeger and Mr. Holly are over in Tallahassee again this morning. There's nothing that we have been working on harder for the last two months than, than this Triumph bill. Uh, we've been all over the board. Uh, when there's a billion five at stake, everybody's come out of the woodwork to steal the money. So, and, and when I say steal, let take it away from where it was originally intended to go to the counties and flow through the counties to, to do infrastructure projects and, and economic development projects in the eight disproportionately affected counties, which is from Escambia to Waukulla. We agreed originally, the counties agreed from, from day one, from the days when Warren Jaeger and Grover Robinson and Bill Williams went and testified in DC to get the money sent back to the states, to the counties. We agreed on what we call the pot one formula, where the range, the, the money would be broken out based on how far you were from the, from the actual oil spill, how much oil you had on the beaches, how much, I mean, the miles of beaches, population, all those factors. And they ranged from about five percent, four point nine percent in Waukulla County, Guff and Franklin were about seven percent. I think Bay County was fifteen percent. Each county was different based on their size and whatnot, and the, the biggest lion's share would go to, to, uh, Spence Cola at twenty-five percent. That kind of got all discombobulated when Triumph got set up. And, and basically a, a five-member board was set up. Former Senate President Gates was the one, was the daddy of that, of that animal. And when it all fleshed out, Guff County had no representation, Franklin County had no representation, Waukulla County had no representation. One county had three members. So it was set up in such a way that the counties and cities had no participation, no elected officials on that board. So we've been fighting for our fair share, and, and just based on where we are right now, under the current plan that the House has, and we've worked hard with, with both our representative and some of our representatives to the West. This year's has been wonderful. Uh, Representative Trumbull has been wonderful, but Guff County's portion of that over approximately thirteen years, fifteen-year deal that we're already two years into, no money's flowed yet, is ninety million dollars. So if you can imagine, you levy ten million in Avroam taxes to run this county budget, that's ninety million dollars over a thirteen-year period. So it's transformational. Get our port up and running, get infrastructure, get jobs. I mean, this is, this is meant for infrastructure to bring jobs. This is economic development money. It's nothing but economic development. But the, so the, so the, those are the stakes, and everybody now is coming out of the woodwork. Education, colleges, you know, all sorts of individuals are trying to take the money. So the House has our percentage for each county, a guaranteed percentage of six percent to be spent in each of the, of the affected counties. But no guarantee that the county commissions are going to get to submit those proposals. So where we're working on the Senate side, they have no guarantee. All the money just flows to Triumph. But we're working hard and diligently. Senator Munford's helping us a lot. Uh, we, uh, but we need it, we need a guarantee where the county can vet the projects, because they're going to be thousands, if not tens of thousands of projects for this one point five billion dollars that this Triumph Board's going to have. So we don't believe that someone in Santa Rosa County, for instance, should pick projects in Guff County, or Franklin County, or Waukulla County. The pe, the county commissions should hear from the people and submit those projects. So that's where we are. We ask you to, to draft a letter. I'm going to get the, the attorney to read it, and, and we've come up with some language to, to amend the current Senate bill, uh, and I believe Senator Munford is going to present this language in the, in the coming weeks, which will marry that with the House bill, where when they go to conference, you know, we can, we can have something that we can live with, which basically codifies the six percent. But it also allows the counties that are getting that allocation to submit those projects to Triumph. The money would not flow directly to the counties. It would still flow to Triumph, but you would pick a project, say it's the port, or say it's the dredging, or say it's some other economic development project. You would package that up and send it to Triumph, and if it met the rules, they would fund it. So the attorney can read that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this, um, we'd ask for a vote to, uh, to ratify the letter authorizing the chairman to send this to Senators Munford and Gaynor. It's, uh, Senator Munford and Gaynor, I write to you as the proud chairman of the Guff County Board of County Commissioners to express our sincerest gratitude and appreciation for your constant steadfast dedication and commitment to the citizens of Guff County. I also write to you to express our utmost concern for future generations of Northwest Florida communities and the impact of the proposed Triumph Fund legislation under your watchful eye and careful consideration of Senate Bill 364. As you're aware, the House, the Florida House approved overwhelmingly last Thursday in a vote of one eleven to zero on House Bill 7077 in a tremendous display of solidarity. We applaud this first step as local officials have expressed from the outset of this most unfortunate event and time in our region's history, going back to April of 2010, that the most suited and equipped stewards for this region's recovery would be those most connected and in tune with the local revitalization and recovery of our communities. I personally have witnessed and worked with my colleagues over the past seven years to ensure that recovery funds would make their way to our local communities. In doing so, the House Bill 777 overwhelmingly affirmed that trust and dedication to our eight disproportionately affected counties of Northwest Florida. With this first step taken by the House bill, we respectfully request your careful and deliberate consideration of the amendment language we first offered to you on behalf of Guff County and its sister counties that have also submitted this plea of great import to all of our future. On behalf of this and future generations of Guff Countians, we respectfully and emphatically ask for your review and thereafter introduction of the following amendment language to secure the local, the vital local involvement and determination of each community's economic and environmental future. Each of the issues addressed by this amendment have clearly been pillars of the original Restore Act legislation and state legislation since, and now in the eleventh hour have been placed at your desks respectively for final implementation in keeping with the original intent and language. With the purest of intentions and the gravest of concerns for our local communities and the residents of Northwest Florida seeking to recover from this tragic economic and environmental event in our region's history, we formally resubmit the request for the deletion of line 268 in the following amendment language for your consideration. An award may supplement but may not supplant existing funding sources. Triumph Gulf Coast shall ensure that each of the eight disproportionately affected counties directly benefit from the awards and ensure that at least six percent of the funds appropriated for awards under Triumph Gulf Coast Trust Fund are expended in each of those counties over the lifetime of the settlement agreement. For an award which includes all or part of a disproportionately affected county's share of funds as provided in the subsection, an application must be made to Triumph Gulf Coast by the Board of County Commissioners from the county in which the desired project will be located. If an award pursuant to the subsection will be located in multiple counties, an application must be made by each of the county commissions of each of the counties for its share of funding for the joint project. Respectfully, Chairman of the County Commission, Ward McDaniel. So we'd ask for a motion to ratify that, to send that to your senators.
I have a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Whitfield. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? No opposition? Motion pass. Five and oh.
The last, last thing I want to, the last thing I want to say about that is, is Waukulla and Franklin have both signed on to that exact same language, of course, and Senator Munford's our senator. Uh, we also have a, a commitment from, uh, Bay County Commissioner Tenell, so they're going to bring that up, uh, at, I believe at their next meeting. So Warren's the greatest asset. He's the chairman of the eight county group, and, and as Don was saying yesterday, the eight counties have stayed together through the entire process. We haven't fought, we haven't done what up. We just, outside forces are all trying to take control of that money, and we're very concerned, especially on the east end, uh, about representation on that board and, and under any matrix, when ninety-plus percent of the population's to the west, we're not going to be able to have a, a fair ground, a fair shake at any type of, of submittal process if we don't have a guaranteed percentage. So I think this will...
All right. Thank you for the...
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Sumner?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Lowry?
Love to run now.
Later down the line, okay? Good, good. Mark, you have anything for us? Lee? Anything? Joe? Feeling better this morning?
Little bit.
There you go. There you go. Thank you, sir.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, in front of you, you have a memorandum for ship awards.
Which one, Joe?
But I'm going to hold it up for you.
All right, yeah, 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 yeah. Hold on, Joe. Yeah, hold on here. Memorandum. That's Brett Lowry. Yeah, I'll just look at his over here. Mine's in here somewhere. That'll be good enough. Go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry.
Don't mind me.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, these bids were opened yesterday. The reason they're not in your consent, uh, I personally feel like these should be brought up like this and not in a consent, because in case there's questions, I'd, I'd like to be able to answer them at the same time.
Here it is, right here.
It's right there, Mr. Commissioner.
I got, I got this one.
Okay, uh, these are three bids we have. Bid sixteen seventeen dash seventeen for Ms. Verleen Franklin, 311 Avenue A. Uh, we request that bid be awarded to Raymond A. Drysback. He was the low bidder at forty-three thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars. Second one is bid number sixteen seventeen dash eighteen for Mr. Early Lewis, 155 Robbins Avenue, Port St. Joe. That, that be awarded to Vision Builders in the amount of thirty-nine, thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. The third bid is bid sixteen seventeen nineteen for Ms. Beverly Maddox, 809 Marvin Avenue, to Vision Builders in the amount of forty thousand two hundred dollars. Let me say one thing about, uh, bid number sixteen seventeen dash eighteen. All our bids are done by the county bid policy. Uh, I actually sent out to four contractors. I received two contractors that were willing to bid. Uh, Vision Builders is the brother of Mr. Early Lewis, but I feel like under the bid process, it was a fair and equitable bid, and that we should not have any conflict of interest with his brother doing the house. The next thing I want to say is, each one of these bids, when we add our closing costs, two of them are already above forty thousand. Forty thousand is the maximum per our local housing assistance plan that we're allowed to spend. Each of these will be negotiated down to around thirty-eight thousand two hundred dollars, which is the most we can do in get closing costs, title search fees, and everything involved. That'll all be done prior to the actual contract being signed with the homeowner and the work accomplished. Uh, I would like to say we're making some really good headway. Uh, I know, uh, we've done a lot of work in Weewaw, we've done a lot of work on North Side, and we're doing work in both your two areas. Haven't got any up your way yet, but I'm getting close. But, uh, I'm, I'm extremely proud of this program. When Don first offered me this program, I really was ready to run away, because I, I love working with veterans, but you know what? These people need me as bad as the veterans do. Worse. Uh, wouldn't, wouldn't one of you want to walk through some of the houses that we work on, and when they're done, they look almost brand-new? They're never going to be brand-new, but their quality of life is a lot better. So I appreciate the opportunity, and I would recommend that you would approve these for me, please.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Attorney, do they need to be voted on individually, or can we just bundle them?
You, you can entertain a motion for all three, sir.
Good deal.
Same time.
Joe, is that it there? Yes.
That's for that one, yes.
Okay, all right.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, I have a motion by Commissioner Quinn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further discussion? Joe, let me, let me say this. I, I was in Holmes, uh, being one this week, but people, we do have people that need help and assistance. We truly do. I have a lady up in Weewahatchka that had a stroke and she needs help, you know, with a bay. She, her home wasn't set up. It's like all of us, we're never gonna get, nothing's ever gonna happen to us. It always happens to somebody else. But this program helps there and with ramps and all and roofs and flooring and all, but Joe, I do, I see a lot of it and I'll tell you what. Good program. I appreciate what you do for this.
Thank you.
I truly do. Anyone in the audience have any question before we vote on these bids for, to go out and help these three applicants? Not as any opposition. None. Motion pass. Five and oh.
Do you want to do the resolution now or wait till later?
Uh, why are you here? To save you from getting up. Uh, why don't we go ahead? We're gonna drop down. We're still up in item number five. We're gonna drop down to item number eight and while Joe is here and that will. Joe, why don't you go ahead? Do you have it with you and everything?
Yes, sir, I do.
Oh, sir, thank you. Go ahead.
Each one of you should have a legal form copy in front of you.
Uh-oh.
Like this.
There you go. Is that it?
With a picture on the back. The picture that's on the back is actually on the screens, thanks to Ms. Lanier.
Oh, I can see it right here. I, I, I've reviewed it, so I know about it.
I'd like to go ahead and read this by, by entire resolution, if I may.
Sure. Proceed.
Gulf County Board of County Commissioners, Resolution Number two thousand seventeen. A resolution of the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners to rename Beacon Hill Park Road to Chris Blasham Way, directing county departments for proper implementation, signage and maintenance. Whereas various other counties within Florida's sixty-seven counties have taken measures to ensure that the memory of all their veterans, both past and present, are preserved for all time and all generations. And whereas the cemeteries in Gulf County hold the remains and honor the veterans who have served the United States of America in conflict since the country was first conceived. And whereas the Gulf County Commission would like to honor the first unfortunate casualty of Operation Enduring Freedom. And whereas the Gulf County Commission for Gulf County wishes to recognize on behalf of their citizens the continuing contributions of our armed services in protecting our freedoms and American way of life. And whereas the Gulf County Commission wishes to honor and memorialize this American veteran Lieutenant Commander Christopher M. Blasham for his sacrifices for our country. And whereas the Gulf County Commission wishes to also acknowledge the families of the armed servicemen and women who guarantee our freedoms and liberties. And whereas the Gulf County Commission has introduced this resolution and declaration of support for the renaming of Beacon Hill Park Road to Chris Blasham Way. Now therefore be it resolved by the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners in regular session this twenty-eighth day of March, two thousand seventeen as follows. The Board of County Commissioners for Gulf County hereby declare and rename Beacon Hill Road to Chris Blasham Way. Be it further resolved that the Gulf County Commission through its public works conduct its departments accordingly within DOT guidelines for the renaming and identifying the renamed road. And be it further resolved that a uniform roadside designation be adopted by the Gulf County for the installation and prominent display along the newly renamed Chris Blasham Road. Duly appointed this twenty-eighth day of March, two thousand seventeen, Gulf County Board of County Commissioners, Ward McDaniel, Chairman. And Commissioners, the pictures are on the screen showing the area that we do, uh, propose to rename. As you can see, it starts at the top of Light Keepers Drive, goes all the way through the park and back down
Ninety-eight.
to ninety-eight.
Anything else, Joe?
No, sir.
Alright, I, I'll entertain a motion for this. We have it by Commissioner Macron. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Whitfield. Thank you. Any other board discussion here?
Or if I could just.
Sure.
Chairman.
I knew this young man.
If you, if you don't know, Chris Blasham grew up in Port St. Joe. I went to school with him. Lee, you did too. And a, a great, great man. His, uh, long overdue. Uh, his proud day. So, wanna thank y'all.
He, uh, Joe, would you carry it how the young man, I think we should go, he was a naval aviator.
Naval aviator on an F-fourteen Tomcat.
What carrier was he flying off of?
You know, I can't remember. Was it the Kennedy, I believe.
Where's Ja, is James here?
James?
James.
His uncle.
Kennedy, wasn't it? The USS Kennedy.
Kennedy.
Is where he was flying off of. Uh, he was actually on takeoff the very first flight in support of Enduring Freedom and had a malfunction in the aircraft and, uh, his, uh, his backseater got out and he didn't.
First.
The first, first support aircraft in support of Enduring Freedom, the first casualty of Operation Enduring Freedom.
Young man right here in Port St. Joe.
Yes, sir. And was a highly decorated Lieutenant Commander. You don't become a Lieutenant Commander in the Navy or any other military without doing your job well above what's expected of you.
Thank you, Joe. Mark, proceed with the signage. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Did it pass?
Did we vote on it? Alright, motion, I get it. Was any opposition? Who made the motion? Right here.
Yeah.
Alright, all in favor?
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you.
Motion passed five and oh. Thank you, thank you. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, let's come on around Houston, you're in a. Lee, you're gonna have to break out the fans.
Just wanted to give you an update on our revenue.
Alright, this one?
I gave you a handout, this one.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, for the month of February, we collected eighty-seven thousand, five sixty-four, eighty-four, uh, which put us up, uh, fifty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-six from last year at this time. And it's to be seen. Let's have a good rest of the year. But everything looks good right now. And I also like to commend Public Works for keeping our fleet on the road. They've been doing an excellent job at it and it's been a challenge for them.
Roger. Thank you, Houston. Thank you so much.
It's Whitfield.
Ms. Adams, you're next.
Good morning, good morning. Mine look a little bit different, so they're not white. Um, I just put in front of you the two thousand seventeen visitor guides. There's two guides. This is the image book that will be used for out of market and it connects, um, adventure travelers with the, our waterways. And then this is the field guide, which will be distributed in market to help the adventure traveler find out all there is to do. So the books will be delivered next week, probably about seventy thousand of them. Mark, is that okay to, they'll be delivered there? Um, and then we'll start using these two pieces with the new branding on them. So I just wanted to let you know, if you have any questions, you can let, let me know.
Here, thank you, thank you. Ms. Rhonda?
Yes, sir.
Anything? Ms. Robbins? Anything, just more. Captain?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, did a.
Mr. Chairman, I had one item that came up from the clerk's office and I just wanted to touch on it. In page ninety-five of your consent agenda.
Page ninety-five.
Yes, sir.
If you would turn over the ninety-five.
Uh, the clerk's office, i- it's a policy that you authorize for our fire districts, for our fire chiefs. Um, and it references a prior policy for spending authority. Um, and going back through the records, we didn't have the, uh, amount in the prior policy. So I'd ask for the commission just to amend what you've approved in the consent today on page ninety-five to include that that would be the spending authority per month for your fire chiefs and our fire, fire coordinator on a monthly basis, so that they're consistent with one another. Um, just to clarify that for the clerk's office, so we can move forward on that spending authority.
So you need a motion to amend?
Yes, sir.
I stand corrected. Alright, sir.
So move, Mr. Chairman, to amend the, uh.
I have a motion by Commissioner Quinn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion on this amendment? Anyone in the audience, any concerns over the fire control? Uh, motion. Any opposition? Motion pass five and oh.
Thank you, sir.
That it? Alright, did I miss anyone in the staff? I think we've got everyone. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, before we go into board business, we're gonna address item number six. Now it's an open seal bid for, a bid number sixteen seventeen dash fifteen is with the Gulf County Health Department Pavilion. Who's gonna? Who's gonna address that? You?
Me.
You. Alright, it didn't say here, so I'm, I'm just searching.
Good morning. Today is Tuesday, March twenty-eighth, and we're here today to open bid number sixteen. Talking back to myself.
Sixteen seventeen fifteen.
Sixteen seventeen dash fifteen for the Gulf County Health Department Pavilion. We only received one bidder, Kathy Construction and Development. Mr. Chairman, the bid from Kathy Construction and Development, total cost seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and seven dollars. Mr. Chairman, I spoke with the Health Department this morning. Their budget for this project is only eighteen thousand dollars.
Hmm.
We, we will give this back to them and let them
Wow.
decide if they want to accept or reject.
Oh, we may have to look at, I think Ringling Brothers Circus is going out of business. They may have a tent they'll let us use, something seventy-eight thousand dollars and.
Oh, these are mine.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner? I was wondering who, who did the plan, who did this plan up? Or out of range?
Yeah.
Commissioner? Your guess is good as mine. I, I, this is new to me right here. Anyway, is there a representative here with the Department of, uh, Florida Department of Health, Mike, can shed a little light on this? I, Rhonda, I didn't mean. Yes?
I, I do have. This is, this is a request from the Gulf County Health Department for us to run their project through the county's procurement process.
Oh, okay.
It's a little less bureaucratic at the local level than it is at the state level.
Okay.
It's their money. And it was not, we didn't have design. They had their own design. They merely run through our process to try to, to, um, facilitate what they was trying to do.
Thanks, sir. Louis? It's their, their call. Well, that's good.
Nothing to do with the county commission. It was the Health Department and we was trying to facilitate them.
What's your, what's your recommendation, Mr. Butler here or whatever? I mean, we just.
I would, I'd say at this point in time, just table the bid. Sal out there not gonna have the money to do it, but I'd table the bid.
That, and I would love to see more bidders.
I believe they're a little short, don't you?
I do.
We, we had a lot of response to the bid, but once everyone found out that it was a pavilion um, and not, the, the, the specs made it sound like it was an entire building enclosed with with all of the bells and whistles for a Health Department building, not what I think that they were asking for in the bid. So I think that may be, we may need to recompile the specifications and work with the Health Department in order to get this down to what is reasonable for them.
Well, I think it would be reasonable. We just table it and bounce it back to them and tell them to. Anyone from board? Any? My call. This is our call.
Yeah, I, I think we should table it also. I'll, I'll make the motion that we table this bid.
Second. Got a motion and a second to table?
I'll, I'll second.
He did right over here. Any other board discussion on this? Like I said, this is not the county. This is through the Florida Department of Health. State. They call it the Gulf County Health Department, but in reality, it's Florida Department of Health in Gulf County. Alright. Anyone in the audience, anything? Alright. Any opposition to tabling this? None motion? Pass five and oh. Now. Actually there, we've got eight, ladies and. Yeah, that was all, wasn't it?
That was the end of them.
Yeah, that's what I thought. You right now?
That concludes all the bids.
We're there. Thank you, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we will move down to this time. We're moving a little faster here. Going into board business, the county board business. Uh, Commissioner Quinn, would you do the honors of, uh?
Yes, sir. I have nothing this morning. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rogers?
Yes, sir, I have nothing.
This time, alright. Thank you, sir. Let's come over here. Commissioner Macron?
Uh, a couple things, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, the board was approached a while back about a, uh, wildflower, uh, proclamation, I guess you'd say ordinance, whatever, uh, and me and Mr. Butler received a, uh, petition from the ladies at the Garden Club that support this, uh, wildflower. So I was just gonna get with, uh, Mr. Novak and let him look into it and see if we can find some common ground. Uh, don't wanna make the ladies mad at the Garden Club.
Oh, don't do that. Oh, no, no.
But, uh, 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 just that and other thing was, uh, we, we've got a problem on C-thirty where the people park on the side of the road. Uh, wait out and scollop and I don't know if y'all have ever been through there. It's dangerous. Uh, if a child was to walk out between those cars, there's no way you could stop, but just one request, Mr. Butler, get with DOT and see if we can, uh, we met with the sheriff yesterday and he, he's requesting us if we can work something out on that.
Alright, Mr. Butler, will you work with Commissioner here? Sheriff spoke, he called me yesterday on this issue and, uh.
Our conversation was specifically south of Treasure Bay. Where.
Treasure Bay.
Right away, rural area and people parked there and.
Actually, I think it's north of Treasure Bay. Is that right?
I'm sorry.
Captain Buchanan, you have anything?
I'm sorry. North of Treasure Bay. So, so we'll, we'll map it out and make contact with DOT and see if they, they can, hopefully they, the, the soft approach will be for them to go in and do something to, to keep people, uh, maybe the plastic post or whatever, close spots in to each other so they can't park there. The, um, the if that doesn't work, then the county commission may have to consider an ordinance to, to allow the sheriff to ticket those people to do part there, 'cause it is dangerous.
Very dangerous, it is.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Whitfield? Oh, thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank the whole board, staff, all the workers, everything. Been phenomenal during my little brief absence and, uh, I'm getting a little stronger every day, but it means a lot to have people that, you know, you feel like they care about your condition. It, it goes a long way, so I'm gonna thank all of you and give you thumbs up on. I have three or four things. Sure. Five that I'd like to bring up, but I think we can move pretty fast on it. Uh, these things are, shouldn't require a motion. I want it mostly to get it into the minutes and before the people. One is a red light at three eighty-six and seventy-one. We have got a dangerous situation developing there and Mr. Rogers may have one on the other end. I don't know, but when the Exodus starts from the beach, they're coming in from three eighty-six, I believe it's the number, Overstreet Road, and trying to get into seventy-one and they're taking all kind of high risk and it's a bad situation. Another one that we got, we're gonna have to address at some point, the red light at seventy-one and River Road. That's where all the school traffic exit right into the sun. Both our businesses there. A lady was hit broadside just a while back to, to the log truck and I don't know the details, but it must've been during school time that the truck was going slower enough, it would probably been a fatality. I know the people, I don't know them like y'all do, but the, um, people that have some say in this, probably Tallahassee or wherever we try to get the money or however. They usually don't move. They wanna see a body count, you know, how many people's been killed here. Then we'll put up a light. I'd like to see us not have to wait for that. Uh, out of the box, I was wondering if there was any way to get the, uh, three eighty-six and three seventy-one plugged in with the road paving project. That whole road's gonna be paved, which is going to make it even worse for the traffic. It's really a bad, bad situation. Only way you can get off of the, I call it Mexico Beach, uh, onto seventy-one, you gotta take a risk. It may be that you don't have to run it seven days a week. You can time them lights, maybe just run them three days to end of the week. But there's some things that we're looking at all the big stuff, but I'm trying to look at some of the little stuff that is, is, uh, it needs really, really looking at and thinking about seriously. I have a, two more items here. One, this is. Uh, before I get into a bigger. Uh, I would like for Mr. Butler to look into. I'll have to tell you what they are, but then I would like unanimous consent for him to do this. And the reason why is we all know what we asking of him and how much work we're putting on him. And, uh, so that's what, I would like to look at what it would cost to do, uh, every three months, the brief pickup and the pros and the cons. We, it shouldn't be too hard. I don't know where we are on trucks or whatever. And we can work out the details, but we should be able to, uh, come up with a cost. We, we've got a serious situation. Right there where I live. Uh, most of you know, a lot of you know. But it's turning into like a third world country. And most of this stuff is being burned into ditches. It's going into the pipes and the amount of burning and going on is awful. And we've got a lot of elderly people. They have no way to get rid of this stuff. They lucky if they can get somebody to drag it to the ditch for them. They certainly don't have trucks and trailers to haul it to a landfill or whatever. I don't know what happened on twenty-two landfill, but that can become part of the discussion. All of this is open for you to come back with and hopefully we can, uh, do that. Another thing that, uh, I would like for Mr. Butler to look into with, uh, I mentioned it to Mr. Mark. And that's a machine for cleaning culverts. We've got some serious, serious drainage problems. I don't believe my district's the only one that's got them. I know even at my house, it has not been cleaned out in forty years. My yard gets four inches deep in water and it'll finally seep out. That's okay in my case, but a lot of these other people, it's not. So we've got a lot of drainage stitches and what, but I, uh, looked at these machines, watched them operate and, uh, it's phenomenal what they can do to get through that twenty-foot pipe and how they do it. And you can't dig around the end of it with a shovel. You're not gaining anything. Raising rats, mosquitoes. I just, uh, would like to see, uh, some sort of a proposal we could talk about as to what it would cost. Of course, you can go to Volkswagen, to the Cadillac. We might could have somebody to even come down and, uh, show us how to operate one. Or we might could get a lease. There's just so many options that we could have. But I feel like we need to move on this. I know we need to move on this. Or we might could get a lease. There's just so many options that we could have, but I feel like we need to move on this. I know we need to move on this, so if it's okay with the board, those two items, I would like for you to, uh, see if you can work something up, Mr. Butler, and, you know, if it's not the next meeting, the next. I'm not trying to put deadlines on you, but, uh, it's been hanging a long time. Uh, let's see, I asked, uh, did anybody know about the bid on the Old Bay City Road? Wouldn't the engineering be quoted on that yesterday? We received the, uh...
We received two bids for that.
Just a moment here. Let me get back to control here. Lee? Alright.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, alright, I'm sorry. Uh, the question about the bid, is that what you're gonna shed some light on?
The bids were open yesterday on this project. Uh, there were two bids, and we need to go into, uh, I sent Mr. Butler and Mr. Hammond an email this morning about a scoring committee, so we have to go through the process of scoring it and...
But it has, you have received it.
Yes, we have received it. At the next meeting, we should have a recommendation.
Right, okay, that's great. We just need to know for information.
Well, thank you, Leanna.
Uh, I had a, uh, with the attorney on the bidder's preference policy, and I've asked him to draw me up some paperwork on it. And, uh, I'll move through this real fast, if he'll be nice enough to pass that out.
This'll be item number nine, is that what you wanna address? Okay, good deal.
I think we've got one for this.
Yep.
Pretty few would pay this, Mr. Here's yours. Leanna, please.
Mr. Whitfield, you still have the floor, Mr. Attorney?
I would like to ask the, uh, Mr. Attorney if he would to read this, you know?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Chairman, uh, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Whitfield, uh, and I had discussed, and he was reviewing the local bidder preference and the policy, um, as we've discussed a couple of the policies of the commission. Um, in this particular one, you'll see that the policy, as it was written and adopted by this commission back in two thousand fifteen, and then what we've done is just to try to make it as easy for you to read as possible. We struck through what, uh, the commissioner would like to delete from the language, and then what's added is obviously underlined, and I'm gonna go directly to it. Um, in summary, right now, you have a five hundred thousand dollar, um, uh, up to five hundred thousand dollars in your local bidder preference and a policy of five percent. And I'm gonna read, if you go to the second page under local bidder preference, I'm gonna read the first paragraph. It says, "The bid of a local business or resident of Gulf County, Florida, may, striking shall, have a seven percent preference over the bids submitted by any non-residential or non-local business of Gulf County for bid amounts up to but not to exceed fifty thousand versus five hundred thousand if the noticed bid clearly states Gulf County's ability to include a local bidder preference consideration in its evaluation and determining factors. If a local business or resident of Gulf County is qualified and their bid is within seven percent of the lowest overall bid submitted, and the notice bid so states the option for Gulf County to consider, then the county may elect to offer the local business the opportunity to match the lowest overall bid submitted for the advertised service, product, or goods not to exceed fifty thousand dollar threshold." That's the crux of the amendment, um, from Commissioner Whitfield, and again, it's, in summary, lowering it from five hundred thousand to fifty thousand for contracts fifty thousand or less, or goods or services, and it raises the five percent to seven percent from your current policy.
I explain some of this and...
Sure.
Yeah, yes.
Uh, fifty thousand dollar contract, about a seven percent advantage, I believe. Check now my math, I've been sick a little bit. Uh, I think it's thirty-five hundred dollars. Fifty thousand dollars, that's gonna put more of this in the hands of the local, small businesses. I booked, but the bet was five hundred thousand dollars. Say, I wouldn't be talking about this, I didn't know something about it. I've lived this better part of my life. I know that works. And, uh, don't make me smart, I just bumped my head a lot. Uh, five hundred thousand dollars at five percent was a...
Mr. Whitfield?
Five thousand dollar...
Excuse me, Commissioner, your microphone on?
Yeah, I'm talking.
Oh, can I tell you my phone?
Can you hear now?
Thank you.
So five percent of the five hundred thousand dollars is twenty-five thousand dollars, okay? Now, if that guy or that person is local, which I doubt, they would already have the advantage. I can tell you, if you got to live in a place, or you got that hometown advantage already, not having to mobilize, you don't have to do any of these things. I always had to do that, and typically, it costs, uh, it's nothing unusual to spend ten thousand dollars to bid a job. So what this does, it cuts out your competition on your big jobs. I haven't seen who else bid and what, don't care, nothing to do with it, but it will keep you from ever getting the best price. I believe I could safely say that it's probably cost this county hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, and you don't know, and you'll never know, because all you have to compare it to is the other bid. And so if you got, and then they were telling the man, if somebody from somewhere else wanted to bid that job, they tell him, if you go ahead and bid it, but if one of these guys wants to match your price, he's gonna get the job. Now, I don't believe my friend here, Mr. Macron, would go somewhere and bid a job that he took his time and money to bid, knowing that all anybody had to do that was already there would be match his price. He goes, he did do something at home, do something different, I believe. But this is a, it destroys competition. You're not getting your best price. The only way you're gonna ever know it is to get more prices and to make the playing field even. And I'm gonna tell you, people doing five hundred thousand contracts or sales does not need to be subsidized by the taxpayer. And that is exactly what happened. It don't show on paper and it never will. And even when we change it, it won't. You'll start getting more work for the dollar. And it'll, it'll be, it will be the difference. And another thing, I know people don't think it happens. When you get down to a couple of bidders, big contracts, they got, I don't wanna call them spies, but ain't nothing going on with each company. And if that company's loaded with work, they'll throw in a high price. They will swap prices, they will give complimentary prices. It happens, and it don't need to be happening to us and our taxpayers, so I strongly, I believe this will end up being one of the most, we've got something else very important coming up later on. But I believe this will be one of the most important things that we can do for this county now. And give it time, and the only thing would be better to be do away with it all, but I moved it from five to seven to try to enhance it for the locals and try to get it by you guys. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Mr. Whitfield, let's, uh, I wanna go back on, I think you're item one and two addressed there about the red light.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, if I could on this and we can...
Sure, sure, I know, we need to...
Could I make a recommend, let's look over this a little bit and get with, sit down with Jeremy and all on this?
I've been with Jeremy on this.
Well, I mean, it's the first time I've seen it. I hadn't seen it.
I understand that.
Would y'all?
You need time for that. I'm not against you having time, but I do get concerned whenever thing we do, we gotta go back and legalize this again.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that this is the first I've seen this, and I'd like to look at it before, you know, come back in the next meeting and, you know, get a recommendation from the board. If that's alright with you?
Yeah, I won't force a vote on it this time, if you don't feel like you got enough information there.
Well, we can do that, or we can just put a motion on the floor to abolish the whole mess, and then we can go from there. What do you wanna do?
I'd just, I'd like to look at it, yeah, let's look at it. I don't think, I don't think it's fair today to do anything, uh, if there were...
You wanna motion it, we can just table this.
That's fine, I'll make a motion to table it.
There we go, we've got that. I hear a second to commissioners.
Yeah, I second that motion.
Thank you. Quinn, any further board discussion on this? We can look it over. You want any audience, any opposition? Motion passed, five and oh to table. Mr. Whitfield, in the sake of time, let me drop back up, item one, three eighty-six and seventy-one.
Yes, sir.
I spent, uh, probably four, five years ago, a lot of time on this with DOT. I was trying to get just a caution light there, red blinking, yellow. Their answer was, there's not enough traffic. Well, I don't agree with them on that. We did manage to actually get a red, a stop sign there with a red flashing light, thanks to Mr. Arthur and Mr. Collinsworth there. State paid for it, I, so that's what we got, but they said absolutely, there just wasn't enough, uh, traffic to warn the red light there at three eighty-six and seventy-one. Now, we can always go back and ask, and I agree with you. I live there on that highway. I know what flows through there on the weekend. I know what comes out there on a Sunday afternoon, and, uh, a lot of trafficking is coming from down here. And that tells me there's people in our county, or they utilizing our county, spending money, but I've already been down this route. I know you're there, you come out every day. I'm like you, I drive an old Mustang, I downshift her when I hit that intersection. I'm moving, because you don't know when a log truck's come flying around and catch you broadside, but anyway. We can, we'll go back to DOT on that, and, uh, River Road?
Yes, sir.
It's there, but again, DOT, they have these experts that can tell you, and I agree with you, we had a serious accident out on twenty-two. I asked for some, put in some, no passing. Well, they put in two yellow stripes about like from here to the wall, but as time you see them, you've done violated the law, but anyway, uh, so we had four vehicles out there, could have had a pure mass loss of life, but we didn't. But Mr. Butler, we'll, we'll get back with DOT on that and readdress those. Archer, sir, you have anything else?
Yes, sir, I have one more thing, uh, and it'd be real quickly. We're on, uh, United States Department of Interior, the, I don't wanna go through all of that. We got a letter back February the twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen. I would like for the chairman to, I don't know if we have a deadline to respond, or where we going to next with that. I would like not to get in too big a hurry. This'll be the most important decision you make in the probably next twenty years. I would like for you, Mr. Chairman, to hold a workshop on that between now and the time that Mr. Novak says that we need to respond. If anybody fully understands all of this, I'd like to spend some time with them. So I don't, I read enough to know that, uh, that need looking at, and I'd like to have it, we can, uh, have it without Roberts rules or anything. I'd like to call witnesses. I'd like to have three or four people that come up here.
Are you talking about on the Cobra issue, is that what you, okay, I know where you at, okay. Well, I think we can probably...
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Do what?
If I could.
Yes, sir.
I thought we had a workshop on it. I'm a little lost here. Uh, I've got, Mr. Butler's worked on this thing for, this been going on for thirty years, and between him and Mr. Jaeger, nobody has more knowledge about the Cobra. And I, I don't fully understand, Mr. Whitfield, but I think we're moving in the right direction, and I don't, you know, I think before we spend a ton of money, I, I would, I agree with you, we need to workshop it, but at this point, I think we're going in the right direction, and, uh, I don't see where we need another one at this time. I'm just...
Mr. Chairman, I think we stalled out at this time. I don't think we have any direct... This is what the workshop today, I certainly don't have any direction as to where we're going. We're gonna have to give the attorney the direction. Needs to be after we know and understand fully what we talked about. Butler the other day said this can go on for the next thirty years. It's been going on for, since the eighties, and if you, if you would just turn, when you want to, not now, I don't care, just turn to that page.
Mr. Whitfield, Commissioner Whitfield, let me intervene here just a minute. I just came back from Washington DC along with Commissioner, uh, Rogers and I, and, uh, we had a very lengthy meeting, and the wheels are turning. They see the direction that we're leaning toward, and they're trying to correct the mistake in Washington now. Commissioner Rogers, is that what you understood? I did too, so we need to give them time. I know you didn't attend, but we need to give them time to get back and assure us it wouldn't be a long, drawn-out affair. It would be within a very short span that they would, uh, have some data coming to us, some information for us to feed off that. Uh, Mr. Butler, do you want to, or the attorney, y'all, you two were sitting in that meeting?
Uh, Mr.? There's a couple of things. Uh, the letter is in the information packet from the Department of Interior, US Department of Interior on page sixteen seventeen, the info packet. That is a letter letting you know that was published, uh, the issue was published in the federal register for the remapping, uh, the St. Joe Peninsula, or in all, there's like a hundred and twenty-five units in the state of Florida, the remapping of those. That's what that letter pertains to. Good. Today, and Mr. Attorney's got some comments on it, today at one o'clock, we have a conference call. We're in Falls Church, Virginia, just west side of Washington DC. Uh, one o'clock sharp, we thought it was gonna be two, then DOJ moved it up to one o'clock today, so we, we've gotta do that at one, uh, conference call. And the issue, and there's several things, the FEMA, the HCP, and the Cobra, they all sort of weave together. HCP is the issue that's been laying on the shelf since two thousand and four, and even though at the point in time, US Fish and Wildlife agreed to what was in the HCP, they have not formally approved it yet. It was working through the HCP again, and I would not bet my grocery money it would ever be approved. But the, but the Cobra issue is, I think, what Mr. Whitfield was talking about, and that's just one of the several issues on the Cape. The Cobra is an issue that we know at some point in time, once we get through, like, this conference call today, I would have loved to have been in person with a new political appointee with DOI, but it didn't work out, because we got a board meeting today, and, but maybe later we can. But at some point in time, we gotta get back in front of the county commission, and we'll show you what we have, and at that point in time, the board can make the board's mind up, if you wanna go forward, you don't wanna go forward, but there's no money, you know, being, no big money being spent at this point in time, but we do, the next, next available thing to do is today at one o'clock, uh, Mr. Attorney and I, and Mr. Jaeger and others would be on the conference call.
Good.
With DC.
Alright. Mr. Whitfield, does that shed any light here for us?
Hey, Mr. Novak, wants to say something?
Yeah, come on.
I was gonna say, Mr. Chairman, just, um, in that letter, it refers in the third paragraph, it says, pursuant to the Cobra Resources Act, they're required, Secretary of Interior, to review the maps every five years. That letter right there talks about how they published in the federal register back in two thousand and sixteen on two different dates. We've talked for the last couple of years about how the county and the federal agencies are on different tracks. They're doing what they're required to do under the act. Gulf County, at your meeting, if you recall, two month, a month and a half ago, you all authorized the administrator to move forward and get, come back to you all with budget numbers, anticipated costs both on a legal remedy, but also through a legislative remedy. But you authorized the administrator to engage, um, special counsel within his spending authority under the county policy and county administrator ordinance to do that. We've done that, we're working with them right now in DC. What we hope to do is next month, come back to you all, um, and come back to you, one, with budget numbers, both for the legal, uh, remedies, also through a legislative, um, their budget considerations, because it's gonna be, uh, a considerable cost to the county. We're gonna come back to you with those numbers, and we discussed that at the meeting, if you all recall. Um, but right now, we're moving in a different direction. That letter that's in there is what they're required to do. They've been doing it for the last thirty years under the act. What we asked for permission to do was the staff to go out and engage this firm and come back to you all with recommendations, and so we're about thirty-five, forty days into that engagement, and by the end of April, we're gonna hopefully come back to you all and give you firm budget numbers, um, that you're gonna have to give us either authorization to move forward and engage them, and the chairman to sign the contracts, um, with those recommendations, both a legislative remedy through the Department of Interior and lobbying efforts, and also a legal remedy through the federal courts. Um, and we've had very positive discussions, we've had a lot of traction, and this afternoon will be our first discussion with the Department of Interior and those new officials under the new administration to look at the county's Cobra issue. Um, but we hope to come back at that meeting in April and give you all those numbers.
Okay, that's good, that's good. Thank you.
My counselor, would you mind reading the last sentence in the fourth paragraph?
Yes, sir. Hang on, let me pull it back up here. Hang on, let me pull it back up here. Fourth paragraph, Commissioner?
Fourth paragraph, last sentence.
Last sentence.
Cobra, I guess they left.
Says the, these units are delineated?
That's a little up higher, but I'm talking about the last two lines in that.
Uh, okay. Uh, most, most new federal expenditures and financial assistance that have the effect of encouraging development, including federal flood insurance, are prohibited within the Cobra units. Cobra does not prohibit development, and it imposes no restriction on development conducted with non-federal funds.
So, we're not restricted from development?
If I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. I, i- if it's a question?
All right, cool. We're gonna come back in April on, Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, I was gonna say, is that?
Go ahead.
That last sentence in the federal government's saying that we're not restricted in development, uh, that, 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 we could address that sentence probably for a couple of hours because what we've all been struggling for is how to, the fact that we didn't receive replenishment funds of fifteen million dollars when the sand restoration project eight years ago washed away, that is a restriction. That is putting the burden back on the taxpayers, as we've discussed in those workshop and meetings. So, the county, you commissioners and the public have been grappling with that issue of, how do you get sand back out on those beaches and restore them? The first time they voted it through over ten years ago, it was a burden shared by this county and the tax base. This last time through, last year, you did it with a combination of an MSTU, state funds, and this commission voted to contribute to it as well. But each time, that sentence right there does not speak to the actions in the direction of this county. The county is saying that, in fact, it does severely restrict any development. It does severely affect the future of the county because there was fifteen million dollars that should've flowed to the county to put the sand back out there. And it never came because of the interpretation from the federal agencies. So, that sentence in their letter to us, that in, in the actions of this commission, and in my legal opinion, do not reflect accurately the status of Gulf County right now. Gulf County is grappling with this issue because you're about to put another restoration project out there for in excess of ten million dollars. And you do not have a guarantee from the federal government that if it washes away, that FEMA will come in and replenish those funds. Those are significant generational impacts to Gulf County in future development. So, that sentence right there, Commissioner, does not reflect this commission's actions or the discussions we've had over the last eight years with regards to restoration.
Yes, sir. I, we won't debate it now, but if you're following paragraph on the next page, if you want to, not but three options to have. Two of them leaves us out completely.
We, we need you to speak in the mic, please, sir.
Not important. Two of them leaves us out completely. One of them is a maybe. Uh, I just don't, I don't see much there for us but continuing this on for the next hundred years. I don't see an end game to this. I don't care how much money we pump in there. It's not going to end if we let it stand or fall on its own.
Sir.
And, and the world's not gonna collapse. Uh, schools are not gonna close. Uh.
I, I'd say, Commissioner, I'm hopeful that at your April meeting, when the staff and myself and Mr. Butler, Mr. Hammond come back to you all, we'll give you all a clear picture, the five commissioners, and say, these are the costs to go down these different paths. Um, these are the expected remedies and, and what we hope to gain by doing those different ventures. But in that April meeting, when you all have the ability to vote on the numbers we give you, hopefully you all can have that healthy debate and let us know which direction you all want to go in.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
At all, thank you. Take your time, the chair. I have nothing before the board this morning. Ladies and gentlemen, I know it's hot in here, and we'll try to move along here. Uh, item number ten, this is the first public hearing on proposed medical marijuana moratorium ordinance. And we'll go right back over here to our attorney on this. It's Novak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you all have a copy of the notice? Uh, and I'm gonna read the notice, and then I will hit the, uh, points of the ordinance. Um, you voted at a meeting two months ago to, in, uh, a month ago, to implement a moratorium. As you all recall in our discussions, the Compassionate Care Act, uh, and the state have, and the amendments that were passed last fall, um, the state is moving in a direction of the legalization of medical marijuana. One of the issues are the implementation and the dispensaries of how the state will go about implementing laws to do that. We're hopeful that, in our discussions, that the House and the Senate will give us some legislation to guide you all in that. Um, in the meantime, we've recommended that you, uh, institute that moratorium just so that there is something on your county books. Um, so if someone or a private business venture wanted to come in under the current law and try to put something here, you had something, obviously, in terms of local law with regards to dispensaries and, uh, medical marijuana. So, the, the ordinance, uh, the public notice has run. Um, today is the first hearing. Your second will be at five oh one on April twelfth, which is a Wednesday evening. It's a special meeting that's been noticed. Um, your second ordinance today will also be heard as a second public hearing. Today will be the first reading and first public hearing. Um, the ordinance reads, it's an ordinance of Gulf County, Florida, establishing the temporary moratorium on growing, cultivation, processing, manufacturing, dispensing, distribution, and wholesale and retail sale of medical cannabis, low T H C cannabis and derivative products, or any related activities establishing a temporary moratorium on the opening, relocation, or expansion of any medical marijuana dispensing facility within Gulf County. Directing county administration's staff to develop proposed land development regulations and recommendations regarding cannabis-related activities. Providing for penalties, providing for the repealer, severability, and modification that may arise from consideration at these public hearings, providing for codification and effective date. Uh, Ms. Leanna Roberts has run, um, in the News Herald. The proof of publication I have is part of your record. You each have a copy of the ordinance. Um, and I'm gonna hit the high points, Mr. Chairman, unless you all wish for me to read the whole thing.
We gotta go to the.
Again, just to recap, whereas in twenty fourteen, the Florida legislature, legislature enacted the Compassionate Medical Cannabis Act, um, which legalized the cultivation, processing, and dispensing of low T H C cannabis as defined by section three eighty-one of Florida statutes, and by license dispensing, organizing, organizing for qualified patients. Um, the comprehensive state license and regulatory framework directs at the criteria for the number and location and other permitting requirements that do not conflict with state law or departmental rule. Dispensing facilities of cannabis businesses may be determined by local ordinance. Cannabis businesses licensed pursuant to law have begun cultivating cannabis for processing, dispensing. And whereas the dispensing of cannabis is currently illegal under federal law, and the United States Drug Enforcement Agency has recently confirmed that cannabis remains Schedule One drug under federal law, but the United States Department of Justice has discussed federal enforcement of such laws with respect to state-regulated cannabis operations under the Cole Memorandum. Uh, whereas in November of this last year, Florida voters decided to amend the Florida Constitution to legalize the cultivation, production, and dispensing of medical cannabis for a broader population of eligible patients. And in January of this year, this Board of County Commission voted unanimously to institute the process to temporarily place a moratorium on the medicinal marijuana for foregoing reasons and to await further implementation guidance from the Florida Legislature. So, now therefore be it ordained, the Board of County Commissioners in the state of Florida. Uh, I provide you with the facts to clearly define what we are despite, speaking of in terms of derivative products, dispensing facilities, low T H C cannabis, medical cannabis, medical cannabis activities. Um, most notably in the whole ordinance is section three, and it speaks, says the following, beginning on the effective date of this ordinance and continuing for a period of hundred and eighty days or less, if provided by an ordinance of this county commission, a moratorium is hereby imposed on the opening, relocation, or expansion of any dispensing facility within Gulf County, including but not limited to dispensing facilities owned or operated and approved dispensing organizations under section three eighty-one of the Florida statute. In addition, the moratorium is hereby imposed upon all medical cannabis activities by any person or entity that is not approved dispensing organization under the Florida statute, except where inconsistent with Florida law. Um, it asks for the staff to come back and give you recommendations. Once we have the, the legislation, uh, we'll give you recommendations after we have that Florida statute. If we don't, we'll come back in the fall and ask you to extend this moratorium if that's what the commission wishes. Um, and it has severability, modification, a repealer clause, and effective date. Again, today is the first reading. Um, we'll have a public hearing, Mr. Chairman, and then we'll come back at five oh one on April twelfth, which is a Wednesday evening. April twelfth, five oh one PM. And we'll have a second reading and hearing on this issue before you can consider it for adoption under your land development regulations in Florida statute.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. This time, I'm going to open up to the public as they stated, this is a temporary, understand? Because Florida legislature, they haven't even decided what they're gonna do. So, we're going to, uh, try to get the cart ahead of the horse. We wanna follow, see what guidelines lay down. But anyone here today, this is the first public hearing, or the, uh, medical marijuana, anyone here today that come before the board, we're open to the public. Mr. Attorney, it's obvious that we don't have anyone that would come before the board, so.
Yes, sir. Um, I, all I'd ask is, Mr. Chairman and the commission, if you have any comments or direction to me today of any amendments? And if not, one-on-one in the weeks to come, if you had any concerns, I'd like to discuss them with you before we get to April twelfth, uh, before you consider it for adoption on that, that evening.
Anyone here, or you just waiting to speak with the attorney? Everyone good with that? Okay. All right, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the next one will be a first public hearing, proposed lot clearing permitting ordinance. And I think we're going right back to our attorney again here. Mr. Novak.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, this also was noticed in, for March fifteenth, um, and will be noticed again on April fourth, consistent with your, um, LDRs as well as Florida statute for restrictions on, uh, land development in Gulf County. Um, the proof of publication was provided by Ms. Roberts. Um, today is the first hearing of two public hearings with regards to, uh, land clearing in Gulf County. Um, as you all recall from previous meetings and discussions, most notably is our habitat conservation plan. And we've talked about the proposed HCP in front of you commissioners for your consideration, uh, and working with the agencies and, and moving the county in that direction. The first step, it was a recommendation of staff that you would consider a land clearing permit process. Um, we've had workshops on that in the last month. Um, the staff, um, Ms. Lanier, Mr. Butler, uh, Mr. Lowry, uh, Mr. Knight have all worked and answered the public's questions. Um, and we're at the point now that you will consider this ordinance to require a permitting process for these affected areas that have critical habitat for endangered species. Um, it's been noticed, and I'm gonna read the high points and then, uh, offer to you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners, for a public hearing. It's an ordinance of Gulf County, Florida, requiring administrative oversight and permitting for clearing of areas with critical habitat as defined by Gulf County authorizing the regulations and administration of, of land clearing, providing for administrative oversight, regulatory authority, including inspection requirements, fee schedules, and penalties for said policies and procedures to be further amended, be codified, and become part of future county land development regulations and/or adopted Gulf County habitat conservation plans. Providing for repealer, severability, modifications that may arise from consideration of public hearings, and providing for an effective date. Um, Mr. Chairman, I, if you don't have any requirements to read the whole thing, I'll hit the high points.
Please, please.
Uh, it reads, whereas the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners find and determine that Gulf County has adopted through action of the commissioners the land development regulations in order to implement its comprehensive plan and to comply with the requirements of the local government comp plan and land development regulations under chapter one sixty-three of the Florida statutes. The commission, after several years of careful review and consideration of the current federally listed protected endangered species, reported along Gulf County's coastline as well as in order to protect the natural coastal environments of Gulf County and the quality of life for all citizens within Gulf County. And whereas the commission has received recommendations of the county professional planner, the county building officials, and through several public hearings on the issue to review the proper implementation and procedures to establish a lot clearing process in and through the administrative review for future development of coastal property within the coastal corridor that may contain critical habitat for one or more of the listed endangered species, and an ordinance that achieves the goals of the comp plan while balancing the property rights of citizens. Um, commissioners, as you know, RV ordinance, side ordinance, any land development regulations, we're always talking about restrictions on private property. Um, and so, what we've struck to do is find a balance between what you all are imposing on private landowners and the federal laws, and also, uh, you know, preserving the coastline. The next page, as you'll see in there, are additional whereas clauses as to establishing why you're doing this. Um, and then the third page talks about the purpose, authority, and the definitions. Um, what we have done as a staff is tried to find an area in which you, as commissioners, have instructed staff, this is not countywide. That's the most important thing to stress. So, if you are not, if you are south a mile, if you within a mile north of the intercoastal, this doesn't apply to you right off the bat. Okay? What we also try to do is find some consistency in your past regulations of when you were required to come to the county administration, the building, the planning department, and ask for a review. So, what we've done is we've taken your past definitions of the coastal corridor, which we've already defined previously in past years, you commissioners have. And if you're within that coastal corridor, this would apply to you as other ones do. What your first step will be is to come down as this checklist through the county and ask the planning and building department to look at your property and determine whether or not you're affected by this critical habitat. Um, page five or four, um, you'll see section six, and I'm gonna hit the areas that would are required. And it reads, clearing of land without a land clearing permit shall be unlawful and strictly prohibited within the Gulf County coastal corridor. Land clearing permits shall be mandatory, and no land clearing, masquerading, fill, or excavation shall occur in the corridor without first obtaining all applicable development approval through proper application with both the planning and building departments. The application review, fees, fines, and approval process shall be defined through the application and procedures established and approved by the Gulf County Administration and thereafter ratified by this commission. As a condition of required land clearing within the corridor, a permit that is not concurrent with a preliminary subdivision plan, development plan, or building permit identified as a protected habitat area shall remain undisturbed in their natural state. Trees, scrub, shrubs, ground cover cannot be removed without the exception of approved area for ingress and egress. Except for areas approved for ingress and egress, not protected areas and vegetation shall be removed from this defined protected habitat areas along that coastal corridor. Um, then there's a, uh, your standard administrative language after that. The only last thing I have, commissioners, um, the application process and procedure was discussed at the workshop. Um, at your April twelfth meeting, right now, they've discussed, I believe, five hundred dollars as the, uh, initial fee that's gonna be recommended to the commission as part of the application process. That's subject to change every year by the administrator. What they've done is the, the process that they've laid out of going to the planning department, making an application, an initial determination whether or not you're in the habitat area or not. If you're not in the habitat area, as I understand it, the application will move, and you are determined to move forward with your clearing. If you're deemed to be within a habitat area, you must follow the process that the county will institute, which is submit professional, uh, survey of the property, show the environmental landscape. Um, there'll be initial inspection of the property. They'll go out and issue you initial clearing. They'll go back out afterward to see what you've cleared, to make sure it's consistent with the plans and the application you've submitted. And there's a step-by-step process that we'll institute. This is all a precursor to your habitat conservation plan. So, this land clearing permit will be required by your HCP, but this is the first step in that direction, um, to work with our federal agencies to protect this critical areas of our coastline. Um, I'm happy to ask answer questions. I know Ms. Lanier, Mr. Butler, and, and Mr. Lowry, and Mr. Knight have all worked on this extensively as well. But if you would, if you have any questions, and then open it to public hearing, sir.
Any, on the board, have any questions?
Uh, Jeremy, so everyone knows, uh, the city of Port St. Joe's not in this.
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
Right, just a moment, I'll go to any other board members. All right. This time, uh, I'm going to open up to the public. And this again is the first public hearing. We'll come back. When will the second and final be?
April twelfth.
Same.
At five oh one, sir. Yes, sir. Same evening.
Fine, it right in with you. All right. All right, now we're open to the public. Anyone in the public on this land clearing, uh, permitting, please? And let me s- say good morning.
Good morning, Pat Hardman, Coastal Community Association.
Go ahead, I'm just trying to.
Okay.
Does this, does this include?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, yes, it's fine.
This is for this? Okay, fine. Thank you, Pat.
That'd be one.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, the, um, this is, is a precursor, and I, I think it's important to note, uh, that actually the US Fish and Wildlife could've been imposing and can impose fines for having done this in the, in the past. What we're talking about here is going into the future. If you are in that area, you go down and put a permit, ask for a land clearing permit, that's the five hundred dollar fee. But if you're not in the habitat conservation boundary, that's as far as you go. You don't have to go any further. If you're in that habitat conservation boundary, then it is gonna be a more expensive and extensive process to get there. But if we don't do it, US Fish and Wildlife, again, can close us down completely. So, it's not necessarily something that everybody's liking, but it's something that we need to do. We need to keep out as much government bureaucracy here at the local level as we can in terms of the process, as well as limiting, oh, on up the line. So, we do need to have this. It, that also comes back to say, if you've already got a building permit, if you've already cleared your land, that's. that's not going to be looked at. That's, you're okay. You don't have to go through this. But if you have not done that, then you need to go through it. And people are actually taking a risk by clearing with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife having us so high on the radar. And so they really, we need to have something in place that protects our citizens as well as protects the county and the land animals. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right. Any more from? All right, Mr. Attorney, anything else here? Any other board members on this? This is our first. We'll have the second and final on April the 12th at 5:01 PM.
I don't, sir. I don't know if the, um, if the planning or building department wanted to offer.
Lowry, you have anything on this?
No, sir, I don't have anything.
Thank you, sir. Let's move right along. We've got what? Item number 12, this is public hearing, Indian Bayou Road abandonment. Mr. Attorney? Seems like you're in the spotlight today.
Mr. Chairman, this is Indian Bayou Road. I'm going to hand you each a packet that'll help give you some color to the picture. For the last couple of months, we've had discussions with regards to Indian Bayou Road, which is approximately a 3.2 mile right-of-way, county maintained for several decades now. And there's been a discussion amongst the Commission with regards to its abandonment. At your last meeting, you instructed staff to start with the process, which is, under your current county policy, to abandon the right-of-way is to notice the consideration at a public hearing. We've done that. We've advertised it in the papers. You'll see in the second page, and there's the proof of publication by Ms. Roberts, and it's been advertised for today. Beyond that, your policy also requires for physical posting, and we've had the public works go out and help us post notices on the property. And you'll see the pictures there demonstrating that, which we'll give to Ms. Roberts for the public record. In addition to that, we've also sent notices to the property owners affected by this. And you'll see in the next two pages that I think Deseret's representative, Wes Quentin, is here today. Well, you also have Wimaco Timber, and I believe we have a representative here today as well. We've noticed them. We've had conversations with them leading up to today's public hearing. The very last page on there is the Willis Landing, which has been part of the discussions that I'll get to a little bit later on. The policy for your county's road abandonment calls for the public hearing, the consideration today. There is a memorandum of understanding, and this is a bit unique in that you're considering this abandonment, but you also have a discussion with the private landowner that there would be an exchange. Your abandonment of this road that we've highlighted across several parcels of the two landowners. I know it references St. Joe, but it's since been updated. So you'll see where it goes through and winds behind a forestry camp, Indian Bayou Road. It's unique in that there's been an offer of conveying Willis Landing, which you have a current lease on, over to the county from Deseret, and there's been initial discussions. The, today's public hearing, if you all decide to go move forward with the abandonment of this right-of-way, we'll need to know from, as staff, what are the terms of that abandonment. The first vote will be to abandon the right-of-way, and then we would ask that it be conditioned on several steps. Those conditions, as we've discussed up till today, are what is the exchange between the private landowner and the county that will give me, as the attorney, the ability to finalize the memorandum of understanding. And then we'll have action items where the county will move forward to abandon the right-of-way. At the same time, the private landowner will work, and we, as a county, will do a legal description and survey of the meets and bounds of that last page, which is Willis Landing. And at your next meeting, we'll come back, and that condition will be that there will be an exchange, as we understand it. But I'll need to know those final details. I've talked to Wes, leading up to this, and we have indicated to them that we'll get them that memorandum of understanding once we have the final conditional approval from this county commission. But that would be the next step. And then the final abandonment, if you vote today to do so, would be on the April meeting of the exchange of the abandonment of this right-of-way, which takes a 3.2 out of the county's ownership and abandons it to these private landowners, which makes it now private, and that Willis Landing, as I understand it, would become a county parcel. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, sir. Any question from the board? Now, you're simply asking today for us to move forward, continue with this process.
Yes, sir. It's a public hearing, so you can get input, so everyone in the public can comment on it, and then you can all vote as you wish.
All right, anyone on the board before I go to the public? Roger.
Yes, sir.
Is there offered a 3.2 acres? West, a document? What would be trading for?
All the discussions right up till now, Mr. Commissioner, is that the, and Wes is here, so he can speak to it. But the, all the discussions up until now have been that proposed area of Willis Landing. And the exact meets and bounds will be done through a legal survey through our engineer and our surveyors. But that is the proposed, as we've received from Deseret, that they will be conveying that over to the county.
Fair to say that this time that we don't have many acres we're trading?
Uh, no, no, sir. I believe the right-of-way is about 20 feet wide, if I, if that's accurate, and it's about 3 point miles, 3.1 miles long. So we can get you an accurate acreage for acreage if that's, but we know that approximately Willis Landing is about 3.1, 3.2 acres on that side of the equation. And in terms of the right-of-way, we can get you that acreage, if you'd like that. Yes, sir.
Let me, uh, I think there's been some confusion here, people. Let me clear it up. There's two things here combined into one. First, the road abandonment. And Deseret cattle and timber has been gracious enough for the last 50 years. We've, Willis Landing, we've always had the right to use it, but we never owned it. And that's there, you know, they said, "Look, we're not in the fishing industry. We're in the timber and cattle business. You take it, and then it relieves us of liability." But there's two different things here. The road abandonment. Get rid of a road that goes nowhere, serves no purpose to this county whatsoever other than for outlaws to poach on it, and for people to carry and throw their washing machines and things, and we have to go down and clean it up. So there's two things here. It's not a matter of we're going to swap you acre for acre. There's nothing to do with it. It's fact that we're, we need to get rid of something, and Deseret is the land on both sides of it along with the... Are you, who's Wimaco Timber? Would you please, there you go back there. All right, thank you, sir. These people are willing to work with us, and it'll be a win-win for both. And then it'll sure be a win for the people of Gulf County and Bay County to all come over and fish in our, in our rivers. All right, let me go to the, uh, any more here from the board? We've moved along here. Let me go to, this is a public hearing, Indian Bayou. Anyone? Attorney?
Yes, sir. One thing that I think is important to note on the public hearing, if the chairman and the commission have no objection. I know Wes and gentlemen from Wimaco are here, but if they don't mind coming forward, we'd love to get them on record if they have any concerns or requests. And if nothing else, can express their consent to the commission as you move forward. I think it would help you all in your decision-making today.
All right. Wes, come on up, please. Try to get you back.
Chairman, Commissioners, Wes Quentin with Desert Ranch. It's a pleasure to be here with you.
All right, sir. Wes, do you mind being sworn by Mrs. Rondo over here?
Not the first time I've been sworn out.
Hey, she won't be rough on y'all.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give in this court shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guide?
I do.
Thank you, Wes.
Now, you have the floor, sir.
All right, thank you very much. So just wanted to let you know that we are entirely in agreement with the abandonment here. We've, uh, we've had the opportunity to see some of the mischief that goes on down that road, and we would appreciate the opportunity to minimize the trespass, the washers and dryers, the firing of rifles, guns, and other things that's occurring out there. It would just make our life a lot easier so that that's not an issue for us any longer, because the use of that road has been very minimal, and we'd be happy to take on the responsibility of that road. I don't know if you'd want me to talk as well about the trade, if that's something you want to touch on. But yes, we, we have offered to, uh, to trade in, as part of this abandonment, the area known as Willis Landing, 3 point something acres. But that'll be finalized again with the survey, with the understanding that it has been leased in the past. But I believe the current lease, correct me, Jeremy, if I'm wrong, but that current lease hadn't been renewed since 2010, at least when we bought it.
I think believe in there somewhere.
Yeah, so at this point, we've just been allowing use, the county to continue to use it, and frankly, that's a concern for us. So one way or the other, we'd like to get this resolved, and we think the trade would be a way to accomplish that. But thank you, Commissioners, Chairman.
Thank you, Quinn. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I believe it's, is it Ray Sharp?
Yeah, Ray. Would you like to come up in behalf of Wimaco Timber? Is that correct? Wimaco Timber. Come on, Ray. Little lady.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give in this court shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guide?
Yes, I do.
Good morning, Ray.
Good morning. My name's Ray Sharp. I work with American Forest Management. We're the consultant for Wimaco Timber. And we are also in agreement with Deseret that we don't see any need, or it would benefit us. Sometimes we wind up cleaning up the trash that's out there, dumped at our gates. The only concern that the landowner had was what, what do we need to do? Or is there anything that we do need to do? Is there legally for, to accept, or, you know, the abandonment? Or how's that, how does that work?
Ray, there's a process that we have to go through, and usually this through our...
Attorney?
Attorney over here. There's just steps you have to take and go through, and that's what we're trying to do now, walk this through. So April the 12th, we can come back and, no.
No, sir. Today is, is the only public hearing, and you can make, you can take an action on this today on your policy. It, I spoke to, is a bit unique because the county's actually doing the right-of-way abandonment, whereas in the past, you've all had private landowners petition you. At your last meeting, you waived some of the requirements, your fees, some of the requirements. But for Ray and Wes, there's nothing they need to do. Once you all move forward, we'll have a resolution. We'll put it in your packet the next meeting. It'll become public record, and after it's formally abandoned, it, that's, that right-of-way through your property is now officially a public record. That is no longer a public access.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ray. So Mr. Attorney, correct me now. I've had so much going on. We're going to vote today?
Yes, sir. There's two action items. The first would be your right-of-way abandonment, which is solely independent of the second issue. And you've, and you've heard Mr. Quentin come up and talk to you about the dedication of that Willis Landing. But I want to make sure that you all take two different actions. Today, you're considering the abandonment of a right-of-way. If you do that, we'll come back at April with that resolution, which will ratify it, and that's when it legally will be abandoned. And during the next month, we'll have a legal meets and bounds, which is a separate issue. But Willis Landing is being offered to you from that, but it has nothing to do, it's, they're separate issues.
All right, thank you. Again, I think we've been, anyone else in the public? Anyone? If not, we're closed. There, we'll bring it back into the board. All right, Mr. Attorney, we need to make that vote?
Yes, sir.
All right, gentlemen?
Chairman, I make a motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Whitfield for the right-of-way abandonment enclosure. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second. The Commissioner Rogers. Now, this is to ban, is that correct? Good deal. All right, we have a second. Any further board discussion here? Voting today on a right-of-way, ban this right-of-way, turn it from public into private. Anyone in the audience, any concerns? If not, any opposition? Motion passed 5-0, move forward for the abandonment of the, what is it, Indian Pass? What do we call it down here? The Indian, Indian Bayou Road. All right, that one passed. The next order will be the Willis Landing, the transferring of the Willis Landing from Deseret to become, from private property into what will be, now will become public county-owned property.
Mr. Chairman, the only action that we'd need or authorization from the county commission today would be to authorize the, the actual legal survey of the property as agreed to by the parties. The county then would perform the survey, which is a cost to the, to you.
That's Willis Landing now.
Yes, sir, and once we present that to Wes and his team.
And they accept.
They approve it, then we'll prepare a legal deed, warranty deed of transfer, and we'll present that to you at the next meeting. But that's the only action item, is just to do the actual survey and expend those funds to bring that back to you in April.
All right, so you just want to move forward on the Willis Landing. That's what you need today?
To do a survey on it, yes, sir, and do a deed.
All right, I got you now. I'm just clearing up there. Find out here, have a...
I made that motion to move forward.
Motion right over here by Commissioner Quinn. Thinking by Commissioner Whitfield. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Any opposition? Motion passed 5-0 for the move forward to Willis Landing. All right, Mr. Attorney, you get with the...
Will, sir. And the only other, I just, the, the landowners have been very cooperative and helpful.
I'm sorry, I, Wimaco Timber, I'm not...
Just Ray and Wes has wanted to thank them. They've been very responsive and helpful. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. All right, now, move on down. Today is the second and final public hearing on a proposed five-year capital improvement schedule ordinance.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'll take that.
Yeah, let's, let's move on that, please.
This is your five-year update to your capital improvement schedule. It's done yearly per Florida statute. We, we update based on DOT's five-year work plan. We add grants that we've applied for, all infrastructure related to roads, parks, et cetera. And this is your, your second final part here. I've drafted an ordinance that the attorney is going to read, and you can go to the public for your public hearing.
Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, I know that you guys are trying to move through, but if there's any objection, you can waive the reading. We can read it by title and then open it to your public hearing, sir. It's an ordinance per... Yes, sir. The ordinance per the requirements of Florida Statute 163, to yearly review and update the Gulf County five-year cap improvement schedule, adopting by reference the Gulf County School District 2016-17 work plan, and incorporating by reference the updated concurrency tracking data, providing for repeal of ordinance and conflict therewith, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. All right, at this time, reach out to, any, any of the board members have any, any concerns? I think you all had a copy. We discussed on this five-year plan. Anyone in the audience? Anyone? No one. All right. Mr. Chairman, I mean, uh, Mr. Attorney?
No, sir. If there's a motion, um...
You'll need a motion to adopt.
So move.
Have it by Commissioner Thron. Second by Commissioner Whitfield. Any other board discussion? One in the audience? Having none in the opposition, having none, motion passed 5-0 to adopt the five-year capital improvement schedule ordinance. All right, we move along a little bit now. Now we get into the part I like, fusion part. Mr. Lowry?
I can handle these as well.
Let's wrap this up. We don't have, we have about, what, one, two, three, maybe three more.
I'll be as brief as possible.
Please.
Brett's very disappointed. He worked a year on that plan, and there was no discussion.
Come once a year.
Okay, let's, let's get in, this is, ladies and gentlemen, this is item 14, a quasi-judicial hearing. Review and consideration by the planning board. Recommendation of the following, we have three. We have a variance, a final plat, and a minor subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll start with item one. It's a variance for... Variance request for Sergio and Monica Galvan, parcel ID 03145-000R, Lot 6, Block E, Money Bayou subdivision, requesting a 6-foot variance into the 20-foot roadside setback off Money Bayou Drive. Your planning, your planning board voted to recommend to the board by 5-0 vote to approve this variance under provisions 3 and 4. Mr. Chairman, this, Commissioners, this particular variance has been given to a number of developers in this area along this road. So I, I've pulled several meeting minutes that... in this area along this road, so I, I've pulled several, uh, meeting minutes that, uh, described it, so don't see any issue with that. Um, if you would go now, I guess, to the public, the applicant, and the board in considering waiving quasi-judicial hearing?
Uh, I'd be glad to, wait a minute, is anyone, uh, first, before I go to that, do we have any representatives here? I see the Galvans are sitting back there, that's good, uh, no, no, that's fine, yes, I gotta do something else first, I need, uh, just wanna know, make sure we had someone here. All right, at this time, is there anyone, is there any objection to us waiving a quasi-judicial hearing here? Is anyone, anyone here, and that's more or less, is anyone here in opposition to this variance? That wants to argue us far or against? Are we okay there, Mr. Lowry? He handles all this through that planning board.
And, uh, we do.
So, we can waive the quasi?
Right.
At this time, all right, back to you.
Y'all have to, I need a motion and a vote on that to waive.
Well, but we wanna bring these good people up.
It'll come up next.
So...
You wanna bang 'em now, or you want us to go ahead and vote on it?
Go ahead and take the vote.
All right, and you say the planning board voted five-oh for this variance, is that correct?
Right, this is only to waive quasi-judicial hearing.
All right, good, I need a mo-, uh, I have a motion to waive it.
I made the motion we waived.
We got it right here by Commissioner, Commissioner Quinn, second by Commissioner Macron. Any opposition, if you want in the audience, uh, waive the quasi passes, five and oh.
Now, if you, if you'll ask the applicant to come up, if he'd like to speak.
Miss Gavin, are you a representative? You all can come, or just you're representative, it doesn't matter. All right, if you would, uh, state your name right over here, this young lady.
Chuck Wright, architect, for the Galvans.
Sergio Galvan.
And your address is right here. What's the address on it? Or give us an... Uh, I know your address, where she on the way is.
Sixty-one Palmetto Creek Lane. Hamilton, Georgia.
Hamilton, Georgia. Okay, y'all can proceed.
Uh, well, we're just here to answer any questions you might have, the information's in your packet, but as Brett pointed out, this, uh, variance of six foot has been granted, uh, by my count, eight previous times, and there's only twelve properties already developed, this is the thirteenth property, the last property on the south side of Money Bayou, and for it to have equal, uh, development compared to its neighbors, uh, we're requesting this, uh, six-foot variance in the setback.
Good, then it will be compatible with the other units there, that's, that's, that's good, that's good, okay. All right, any questions, anyone from the board have any questions down in your district there, Commissioner? Nothing, okay. All right, thank you, sir, we'll vote on it here, just in a second. Get back to their seats.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add, uh, that the, the hearing was properly noticed, there was a waiver of quasi-judicial hearing, and myself and the planning board deem, uh, the substantial completeness of the application and other procedural steps required in your LDR.
Good deal.
Uh, any discussion from the board, questions?
What was your vote on it?
Five and oh.
Okay, that's good enough for me.
Good deal, all right, I hear a motion for this variance request.
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Macron, now your second, second by Commissioner Roberts, any further board discussion? One in the audience? Opposition motion passed five and oh for the variance, thank you, good people for being patient, good luck with your new venture. Next item will be the final...
Yep, Mr. Chairman, uh, the second item, uh, final plat approval, the Preserve at the Cape LLC, parcel ID number zero six two six eight dash zero eight seven R, located in section seven, township four, South Range eleven West, uh, located off of Cape San Blash Road, a subdivision consisting of twelve residential total units over four point three four acres. And at this time, uh, again, if you would go to, uh, the public, the applicant, and the board, if you guys wish to waive quasi-judicial hearing.
Good deal, all right, first, before we get, is there a representative here? Thank you, Mr. Hussman, we'll get to you in just a minute. Or is anyone in the public, we're open now for this quasi, anyone in the public have any opposition, or opposed, or anything there? Anyone object to us waiving? All right, if not, then I'll come to the board and accept, I'll introduce or entertain a motion that we waive the quasi.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got it right over here, Commissioner Quinn, second by Commissioner Rogers, any further board discussion? All right, we waive that, now...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, you do have a representative, uh, here to speak on this. Uh, Mr. Hussman, um, as he comes up, I'm gonna read you the recommendations from the...
Sure, I'd like to know what the vote was.
Uh, the planning board recommended by three, zero vote with two abstentions to approve this final plat, uh, of a minor subdivision.
Good deal, thank you, good morning, Jackie.
Good morning, um, I'm here today to represent the Preserve at the Cape LLC, um, as Mr. Lowry said, it's four point three four acres, we are proposing for twelve lots, density allows for thirteen point zero two lots, um, the final plat has not changed whatsoever from the preliminary plat submiddle, um, we're gonna enter off State Road thirty E, um, the only thing, just so I'm, I like to be open with everything, I did not have the stormwater permit at the time of the planning board meeting, I told them I did not have the stormwater permit, the calculations are done, I've got them right here, um, since then, we've since received the stormwater permit, it's a, it's an odd thing, um, you only have thirty days to actually start construction when you apply for the permit, it's an instantaneous permit, so, um, we waited as long as we could for this meeting just to do that, so I wanted to let you know, that's why, uh, we did not have that during the planning board meeting.
Good deal.
Other than that, we got everything's, everything's ready to go.
You had a timeframe there, you...
Yes, sir, which I try, you have to, I try to manage it out between, uh, the schedule of the meetings and when the construction can start, money, and all the above.
Good deal. Anyone? Jackie, thank you for your patience.
Mr. Chairman, the only other item I'd like to mention is, they do not plan to bond their construction, uh, they are going to escrow the amount, the hundred and fourteen thousand dollar number, um, in an escrow account, and, uh, I'm gonna work with an attorney, uh, to get that handled, uh, for their construction of their road and other infrastructure.
All right, my, okay, before we vote, my understanding is that it was three with two abstentions.
That's exactly right.
On the vote, so they had a conflict or something.
Right.
Good deal, all right. Thank you, is there anything else, Mr. Lowry?
And, uh...
No, we gotta...
If I could read this...
Close this, are you, are we still on this, uh, final plat?
This same one.
Okay.
Uh, if I could read this to you, the recommendation, recommendations from the planning board, uh, to include that the hearing was properly noticed, there was a waiver of quasi-judicial hearing, myself and the planning board deem the substantial completeness of the application and other procedural steps required in your LDR.
Good deal, is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Gentlemen? We'll entertain a motion, or I'll entertain a motion to... It'll prove for, whatever.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn, second by Commissioner Rogers, any further board discussion? One in the audience, any opposition? Motion passes five and oh. All right, now, the, I think this is a final, yes, uh, this is a minor subdivision preliminary final plat approval, James Hambrick.
Yes, sir.
Three eighty-six, all right, let's address that one.
All right, uh, minor subdivision preliminary final plat approval for James P. Hambrick, parcel ID number zero three five one six dash zero zero one R, located in section seven, township four, range eleven West, adjacent to C, CR three eighty-six and Basswood Road, a seven-lot subdivision consisting of seven total units over four point eight one acres. And, uh, if you would go to the board, um, the public and the applicant and ask for a waiver quasi-judicial.
All right, first of all, is there a representative here? There is a representative, okay, well, that's good, I like to know that, all right, does anyone have any objections to this board waiving the quasi-judicial hearing? Anyone? All right, I need to entertain a motion for us to waive this quasi.
So moved.
Got it by Commissioner Macron. Second by Commissioner Whitfield, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience, all right, any opposition, having none, motion passed five and oh to waive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, if you would now ask for the applicant to...
Please.
Uh, as, as Ms. Marley comes up, I'm gonna read you the recommendations.
Sure.
Uh, of the planning board, it was the planning board's recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners by five-oh vote to approve preliminary slash final plat approval of this minor subdivision with an exemption, uh, slash variance for paving on Basswood, and I wanna explain a little bit.
All right, are you gonna explain this paving, or are you gonna do it?
Uh, let me, let me explain a little bit.
All right, you come over here, let's do it.
Of this, um, they, they voted to give them the variance in the planning board.
Okay.
Um, after the, after that board meeting, uh, me and Ms. Marley got together, discussed another option where all the lots would be configured to access ingress egress off three eighty-six, therefore, there's no paving criteria, so today is what she's bringing you now for final plat, I've provided it to you in your packets, uh, so I'll let you, I'll let her explain the new, uh, plat.
Okay, uh, so just a minute, now, as I understand the gentleman, all the egress and ingress will be with County Route three eighty-six?
Yes, we reconfigured the lots.
Okay, all right.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
I reconfigured the lots so that every lot has an access point coming in off of three eighty-six, and there's also a note on the plat that says that all the driveways for the lots will come off of three eighty-six and not Basswood, period. So there's really no need for anybody to come in off of Basswood. There's no infrastructure, uh, we do have letters from the city saying that they will provide the water, we do have the health department, uh, whatever.
Yeah.
Permits are not at hand, but they have said they will grant permits, yes. So, it's a minor subdivision, it's, all we're doing is cutting up the lots into anywhere from a half an acre to one acre tracks, and there's...
Or partial.
Right, and there's a total of seven lots.
Seven lots, and they, okay. Mr. Lowry?
Mr. Chairman, uh, what I would, uh, recommend to you is to deny the, the request, uh, for the previous plat and, and approve in a second vote, the new plat would be what I would recommend.
What you want us to deny?
Deny the variance, the variance on the paving of Basswood first.
Oh, okay, I got you, all right, thank you, dear, all right, gentlemen?
I make a motion to deny.
Whitfield, thank you, sir, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron, any other board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Any opposition, if not, motion to deny, the first passes by vote of five and oh to deny, now, we've got to, am I correct, Mr. Lowry, now that we got a vote to accept a new?
Right, let me read through this real quick, and then I'll ask for another vote. Uh, the recommendations, uh, from the planning board, uh, the, uh, were denied, this prop, this hearing was properly noticed, there was waiver of quasi-judicial hearing, myself, the planning board deem the substantial completeness of the application and other procedural steps required in your LDR. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would ask for a vote, uh, to approve the, the new plat.
And that's in agreement with the planning board? Correct.
Say again.
With the planning board, that's their...
That was their recommendation, uh, what was the vote? It was a five-oh vote to approve, and, and you have since denied that, and would need another vote to approve this.
All right, getting confused, okay, I'll accept it, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we got you over, thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Second by Commissioner Whitfield, any other board discussion? Anyone in the audience, any opposition, if not, motion passed five and oh to approve.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sue, good to see you always, thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
You what?
That's all I have.
Yeah, I'm glad, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, item, we have two more, ladies and gentlemen, just bear with us, uh, what a House bill, number seventeen, home rule, uh, who, who wanted to...
I asked Mr. Nova.
Oh, you did, okay, did you get that clear, do we need anything, or is everything?
I just want him to go over, walk over.
All right, let's do it.
It's a resolution, uh...
All right, good.
They're trying to strip away home rule.
Isn't that the truth?
Just a resolution, too.
Oh, yeah.
It takes a little bit every year, you know?
Every year, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners? Commissioner Macron, you want me to speak to it?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, um, a, a, as we've been discussing all morning, a bunch of House bills, Senate bills, um, legislation being introduced, attached to the resolution, uh, being offered by the Commissioner, is both House bills, uh, seventeen, um, as well as House Bill eleven fifty-eight. Um, the first House Bill seventeen attached to it, I'll speak specifically to where they're trying to amend the current legislation, it's the regulation of businesses and professions, and the language that Commissioner Macron and I had discussed was, it says, "After January first of two thousand seventeen, a local government may not adopt or impose a new regulation on a business, profession, or occupation unless the regulation's expressly authorized by general law." Then it talks about the preemption of regulation to the state, essentially taking the local jurisdiction and power for regulating businesses and fees and fines from the county commission to Tallahassee. The second is, uh, the Senate Bill eleven fifty-eight, uh, you'll read, also, it, it goes on to talk about, um, the regulation of commerce, trade, and labor, um, and the local government's ability to control and regulate those three, uh, areas, and it goes into great detail as to preempting local county rule under Florida statute one twenty-five, and again, takes that power back to Tallahassee. What we've done, and Commissioner Macron requested a resolution, um, and I'll gloss over it, it's a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Gulf County encouraging members of the Florida Legislature to oppose House Bill seventeen and Senate Bill eleven fifty-eight, which would preempt local government home rule authority and threaten the existence of numerous and wide-ranging regulations currently in effect unless such regulations are expressly authorized by general law, and authorizing transmission of the resolution to the Gulf County Legislative Delegation and the Florida Association of Counties and other interested parties. Uh, it, the, the high points are, whereas in nineteen sixty-eight, Florida counties and municipalities could exercise only powers specifically granted to them by the legislature, uh, whereas due to the inability of counties and municipalities to act without specific authorization, in nineteen sixty-seven, Florida Legislature enacted eleven hundred and twenty-five special or local laws. Also, in nineteen sixty-eight, Florida voters amended the Constitution to confer upon charter counties, uh, broad home rule, uh, further, under statute one twenty-five, non-charter counties also received home rule powers, uh, whereas Gulf County home rules powers flow directly from Article eight of the Florida Constitution, um, whereas House Bill seventeen is enacted, if enacted, would prohibit counties and municipalities from adopting or imposing new regulations on businesses, professions, occupations, whereas Senate Bill eleven fifty-eight, if enacted, would preempt the county's authority to adopt and enforce regulations relating to commerce, trade, or labor, um, whereas both House Bill and the Senate Bill represent the antithesis of the home rule concept pursuant to which the county has creatively solved problems and addressed local issues and concerns unique to Gulf County and its residents, uh, whereas in the event of the county's unable to regulate these or other matters of local importance, the burden and responsibility for addressing such issues would shift back to the Florida Legislature, a hundred and sixty-member body that is constitutionally focused on matters of statewide importance, which meets once a year for approximately sixty days, and is located outside the geographic limits of Gulf County, making it difficult for local citizens to effectively petition the Florida Legislature for change, whereas Gulf County Board of County Commissioners strongly believe that the House Bill seventeen and Senate Bill eleven fifty-eight in the best interest of Gulf County residents and businesses, uh, now there be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners, um, the recitals above, that the county commission hereby expresses its opposition to this House Bill and Senate Bill, and respectively encourages all members of the Florida Legislature to oppose such bills, um, and it authorizes our transmission to our Legislative delegation in Tallahassee.
Deal. People, they want all to say, and then they pass all the monetary items down to the counties. We need to keep home rule. Yes, sir.
Address this.
Yes, sir.
Attorney, would you check in? I may not have the right number, but I believe it...
I may not have the right number, but I believe it's Senate Bill seventeen seventy-four. It's going to be an additional twenty-five thousand dollars, homestead exemption throughout the state. That's to about eight hundred million dollars. We need to get the tax people here to see how much that's going to affect us, because we're gonna have some problems.
Yes, sir.
So, just so we can know it now.
Now, that's. Do what?
Ms. Lanier has it.
Getting that information up for our association, yes, sir. It is gonna have a, a big fiscal impact.
Yeah. Sounds good for the home, but bad on the other. Now, let's get back to this ordinance here that, uh... Commissioner McCrone, you.
I'm good.
You good with this? Any other Commissioners? Mr. Attorney, Mr. Butler, anything on this thing that we follow this up? All right. Entertaining a motion.
So move.
Got it right here from Commissioner McCrone. Second, second by Commissioner Rogers. Any other board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Any opposition? Motion passed five and oh. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're just about at the end of the road here. Uh, the next item is Stacy and Michelle Hanlon. It's a road closure on Papano Street, and, uh... You still here? Good, please, if, uh, whoever's gonna be the spokesperson, I guess that's you, Stacy, come on up, and, uh... I think, yeah, you're on agenda, so she's got you. You need his name or anything?
He does need to say it for the record.
All right, just for the record.
Stacy Hanlon.
Address.
Four fifty-five Papano Street.
All right, sir. Stacy.
Thank you.
Your time.
Gentlemen, I appreciate your opportunity, being able to come before you and speak, um... On behalf of my family and myself and my neighbors, um, we have a letter I would like to read, try to make it short as we can possible.
Your time.
At a request, I'm putting into writing the serious public safety property rights concerns that, that my family and neighbors have regarding the closing of Papano Street in Highland View. My name is Stacy Hanlon. My family and I, we resided at four fifty-five Papano Street in Highland View for the past twenty years. My extended family has owned and paid taxes on this and the property next door for over sixty years. We own the home located at four fifty five, four fifty-five Papano Street and is occupied by myself, my wife, and my three children, and of the three children, two of them are drivers. My family and I have had a positive relationship with the Highland View Church of God located directly across the street from my home. We were members of the congregation for some time. My family and I fully support the youth and the work and the ministry that the church has taken on, specifically the seventy-five and a hundred kids that's being bused out throughout the county to church every Wednesday. And I want to be clear that we're not asking that the youth be stopped, not at all. We fully support it. We're just simply asking that our immediate family, our parents, our friends, our coworkers, our visitors, and all public safety and healthcare personnel have unimpeded access to our property and our neighbors. Since September of twenty sixteen, each Wednesday evening barriers have been put into place by our church neighbors that completely closed the block of Papano Street to public traffic for over one and a half hours, sometimes a little longer. This happens at a time when my family and I are returning from home at, at the end of the workday from school and from other activities. Originally, the street was blocked off by personal and church vehicles. More recently, movable barriers have been used to close the road. The children are then allowed to play in the closed road and routinely come on the property, even though we've asked them not to be allowed to, and there are no trespassing signs posted. Frequently, there is one, maybe two supervisors for all the children, and they can prevent all the kids from kicking and throwing balls and other toys that hit our vehicles that's parked in the yard and end up in the yard. This creates a risk of injury to the children and a financial liability for me. My parents, my children, and the county should be, if any, injured while playing in the street. There is no compelling reason for the road to be closed to public use. The church has a large play area with basketball, basketball goals, and there is a very large grass area.
Just a minute. Motion.
So move.
Where?
I'm sorry.
Just procedures.
In addition, there is a large area behind the church and a parsonage is away from the road and vehicle traffic and owned by the church. The closing of the road creates a potential and legal financial liability for the county should one of the members of our, uh, one of my members should get hurt. And we have a ninety-one-year-old neighbor that lives down the street who has recently needed ambulance service on a number of occasions, or many other of our neighbors that require emergency medical care. If the fire department or any other fire engines or police should have to respond, they would have to move the barricades out of the way in order to get there in a timely manner. My family and I objected to the lack of the due process and notification that the road closure was going to be publicly discussed and acted on. As abuters to the church property and roadway, we should have had the opportunity to provide our objection to the road closing and give our reasons on the road. And go on record as to saying we object to it. And in closing, we want to be clear that we support the youth ministry, and we do not object to the kids. We have nothing against the kids coming. I'm all for the kids. Anything positive, I'm all for it. We just want access to our driveway, and there's no reason to deny the public access from portions of Papano Street or restrict access to public safety and healthcare personnel emergencies. Nor is there any reason to prevent my family or guests from having access to our own driveway or own yard. It is unreasonable for us to be exposed to unnecessary legal and financial liability due to the children playing in the road and running around on our property. None of us want to have to defend ourselves in a lawsuit as a result of an injured child. More importantly, we don't wanna, we don't want any of the children hurt. The church owns and controls more than enough land to support all the children's play needs and could do it in a far safer manner than allow them to play in the middle of the road with minimal supervision, as currently the situation. Now, the recent placement of a temporary orange rubber fence between the road and the church's property and the lawn area should be continued to provide a visual brown boundary for the children to play inside of. It provides a much safer and better environment for them to play in. We understand that the county did not have all the facts and opinions of the abuters before, before them when this matter was first considered and acting on. And at this time, my family, neighbors, and I are requesting that the approval of the road closure be reconsidered. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hanlon here?
I got one question.
Here.
I, I just want to ask, so from my, from my understanding, you're saying that you, you all were never on board to the road being closed?
No, sir.
Not from day one?
Oh, ma'am, he'll have to speak. He's a representative.
Okay.
No, sir. It was.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Are you, where you can't get into your driveway? Now, my understanding, ma'am, you're not recognized, just a gentleman here. Uh, on this night, I'm just presumably on church night or this youth night or whatever it's having. It lasts, you stay here approximately how it has, maybe two hours at the most. During that time, when they block, when the streets are tempered, or the street Papano is temporarily, uh, barricaded, let's say, can you not get to your property?
No, sir.
You cannot get to your property.
You have to move the barricades out of the way to go around to pull into the driveway.
Get into your property.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I do have, I do have some pictures too, to...
I know another area does this, but they don't block anybody's getting to their homes.
I do have these as well.
All right, all right. I think I've, uh... Mr. Hanlon, was you originally involved with the program? Weren't you involved with the program?
We started.
Anyone care to look?
We started into it.
See a lot there, but.
And then just kinda got away from it. But it's just, it's nothing to do with none of that. We just want access to get in and out of our driveway. I mean, it, it started out something small, then it just got where you couldn't come in, you couldn't go out. And I've got two other people that drive in our house, and it's hard to... I don't want them backing out and having to hit somebody or take that responsibility on if one of the kids happened to hide behind one of the vehicles or something or other, you end up backing over them and not seeing them, or having to dodge them trying to come in in and out every night. I want them Wednesday nights.
All right, uh... Okay. I think we've got a solution to this. Commissioner Rogers, uh...
Yeah, I've talked to you, I've talked to the people at the church. I've got some people that have promised me to help fund a privacy fence back of the church. And the church promised me if they could get the kids away from those dogs on the back of the property, that they would move them off the road, and all that would go away. So I'm doing everything I can to get that. Hopefully, within the next week or so, we will see fence coming. If that happens, all this will go away.
That'd be great.
Yeah, you know. Uh, now, I still can't promise you know that young ones won't run out in the road, but the barricades and all that will go away when that happens.
I understand kids are gonna come out, you know, and that's just, they're just kids, you know what I mean? But I just don't think that, I just want to be held responsible if something happens or one of them gets ran over.
We, we understand that, and we, we're trying to, there's always, you know, we can find some middle ground, I think, uh, Commissioner Rogers. I know, it's my understanding through, uh, Mr., uh, our administrator, that Commissioner Rogers had been out. And, uh, I thought, well, fact of the matter is, you called me, and I think you told me, it may, maybe it was you that said that he had been out, which I appreciate him going out and seeing that. But, uh, understand, this won't be county money. This is gonna have to be people, and I'm gonna, I've already, I'll, uh, I'll throw a little in the kitty to get up, but first, we've got to get, you have to have a plan, and, uh, before you go making commitments and, uh, please, right now, uh, we probably, after this meeting, have someone to start getting pricing on fencing. And, uh... Yeah, I had somebody yesterday get started.
Oh, you have? Okay, well, he's, he's already on it.
I've already talked, uh, looked and seen how many feet it is. It's a hundred foot on the back, so, you know, it's, um...
And this will shift the children from the street to the back. Okay, and that'll solve it.
Not only will it get them off of the street, it gets them from out in front of your house where the liability would fall on you.
That's true.
It'll get them in the back of the church.
That's the concern I had. I didn't want to take.
Can you work with us on that?
Yes, sir, no problem.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the final thing.
Another.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I, we've been here. Come on up, Dennis. All right, Mia throws something at me occasionally. Good morning to you. Yeah, it's still morning.
Uh, Dennis Barfield, uh, representing Highland View Church of God.
Okay, here we go.
Gentlemen, um, thank you for hearing me, uh, today. I, uh, I come here, I didn't have time. I didn't know about this until about four or five minutes into it, so the pastor's not here. Um, we have made many measures to try to rectify this situation. Uh, we put up, like he said, temporary fence. Uh, Commissioner Rogers saw that. Um, we do not allow the kids to go anywhere near the road. Um, and we haven't had barricades up for almost a month now. Uh, Commissioner Rogers, actually, our conversation with him was that, um, we would do all we could. We actually took the barricades down. We haven't had them up, I know, for the last three weeks, and tomorrow, we won't have them up again. Um, what we are doing is we're relocating them now to the fellowship hall. They can go from the fellowship hall to the, um, the play area out front. Uh, we have no asphalt or concrete in the back. We have two basketball goals. That's why predominantly they stay up front. To give you a little history on this, um, I was at a, a very large church here, uh, locally, and about three years ago, I decided I wanted to work inside my community. I live a block away from the church. Um, my wife's family, they own a block there. They've been there forever. I just wanted to pour back into my community. We started the program with, between our youth and our kids, we had about ten. And now, we topped out at eighty-three on a Wednesday night service. It has grown fast, and, and, and to be honest with you, um, there are times where one or two people get sick. It, it does become an issue where we have to really confine them to the buildings. Um, we've never told a kid he can't come, um, but we, we do our best. And, uh, my job, uh, in this whole thing, I don't get paid, it's volunteer. Um, I do it for the love of the kids. All we do is feed them and tell them about God for an hour and a half. I have an hour and a half every week to pour into these kids. Um, I know not everybody's gonna be happy with it, but my response about the road closure is, you gentlemen, make whatever decision you have to make. We don't want to put you guys in a legal situation. We know there's been talks of lawyers. We, we will go, if you guys want to take the ordinance away, we have no problem with that. We are working in, uh, ways to rectify the situation to get them totally on the property and nowhere near the roads. Um, but saying that, I can't control when a parent comes and drops six kids off out front if those kids go one way or the other before they go into the church. Um, so we're doing our best, and like I said, we haven't had barricades up for almost a month now. Um, we've had temporary fencing up for over a month. Um, but to give you an idea of the barricades, I know a lot of you guys, Commissioner Rogers, seen them. I have a team of three, four, five, and eight-year-olds that helped me move the barricades. So they're not big lumbering barricades that can't be moved if you need to get somewhere. Um, so thank you guys for your time, and, and like I said, we wouldn't be opposed, we wouldn't fight it if you guys want to take the ordinance away. We don't have a problem with that. We're not here to cause rifts. We're just here to minister to kids, so whatever you guys want to do, and thank you for your time.
Just a minute.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Barfield, your church is open to all.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We have.
These, there's nothing more important than our youth.
Absolutely.
Our country's in a mess. Try to get.
And we were very blessed to, to get a bus donated to us, and we're able to minister to, we have forty and fifty kids on that bus.
Church out there, we have one large youth group there, and amazing, the little ones and all. But anyway, uh, I, little... Said here, you haven't had these barricades, you've switched from barricades to a...
We haven't had the barricades physically up for at least the last three weeks.
All right. Let me ask you here. The old saying, you know, I gotta look here, and I gotta look here, and then I gotta look right down through here. That's where I have to look. Uh, is there a problem with the children getting into the streets? I mean, it don't matter if it's just one, but is there a problem?
Sure, there, there was a time when we had the whole block blocked off, we would let them throw football, uh, in the road, play tag. Um, but we had representatives at both ends of the barricades.
I'm talking about right now.
No, sir.
You don't have it.
No, sir.
All right.
No, sir.
All right, sir.
And, and the barricades are, they're, they're driving, you can drive around them using the right of way, um, so... But we, we won't be opposed to any measure you guys take. If you want to reject the ordinance, we have a problem with that, one way or the other.
I want to ask a question.
Sure. Commissioner Quinn.
Uh, I was, that's what I was gonna ask the question, what, first of all, I appreciate what y'all do for the community. Um, you know, there's a lot, a lot of kids, and all I've been hearing was good, good things about it. I appreciate y'all picking up some of the kids in my community also, and I'm ministering to those kids. It means, it means a lot, especially when you got a lot of kids without fathers, so I appreciate all that, that you all do. Um, the other question I was gonna ask was, are you okay with us taking away the road closure?
Absolutely. We would not be opposed to it. We came here, um, at the time, we believed all of our church members were behind it. Um, and evidently, we were confused. So, yes, sir. We would have no problem with that.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Uh, whatever, whatever Commissioner Rogers wants to do on this, I, I'm with, it's his district.
But I understand. We, let's, and go this route, throw my name in the pot. It'll have to be from private donation. I have all the organizations.
Uh, I think the solution is, you know, to, to get the kids on the playground in the back. You know, as far as the barricades, if they're not up now, you know, I mean, it, uh, kind of a mute thing to, uh, rescind the ordinance, you know, I wasn't here, well, there was three of us that wasn't here when it was passed, so, you know, it, it, uh...
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. Just one thing. There, there is no ordinance.
Uh-uh.
The prior, prior commission authorized the road closure for this, uh, youth group on a particular time. There is no ordinance, so you don't need to rescind an ordinance. You just, it's a cur, it's a past board policy. And if you'd like to rescind that, you can do that through a motion. Um, it sounds like you have a solution for all parties' interests moving forward. Um, but the only action the board would be to simply re, re, rescind that previous road closure.
I'll make the motion then. Thank you, sir. Motion here is to rescind the previous, all right, thank you. Do I hear a second? Thank you, sir. Motion is to rescind the previous, alright, thank you. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Whitfield. Any other board discussion here? On this, anyone in the audience? Any opposition to Commissioner's motion? Not motion passed five and oh. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. That concludes the business. March twenty-eighth, regular meeting. Thank you again for coming out. I'll entertain a motion for a gentleman. Wait a minute, what you got?
Public discussion.
On what?
Number seventeen.
I had the only applicant that wanted to speak in pu-